Okay, the hour being after seven, we'll open the meeting. First order of business is approve in the minutes of January 19th. I read that lengthy email by one of the members.
Motion to approve the minutes?
As corrected.
As corrected.
Anybody else set? All those in favor?
Second.
I'll second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstained? Okay, next one is seven, Winter.
Mr. Walsh is going to be a few minutes late. He asked if you could take that out of order.
All right.
And just go to the next one first.
Johnny's getting off the operating table to come in?
Yeah, he is, just getting on now.
Oh, we're eight. All right. And we have a minute or two before four. Seven oh five. Self signed and a lot of plans to endorse?
Um, no.
We've got a lot doing the A and R.
Maybe the A and R, yeah. Which one do you have?
We got the Lewis Park.
I want to do Lewis Park first.
Okay, and? Is it for the whole thing?
Yeah. He says good.
Plan the reference. I was in here.
Okay. All right, so what is the?
Revised. Okay, posel A three, all right. Where's Waldo? Where's A three?
I see A two.
You guys find it?
I got A two.
Yeah, I got A two, but where's A three?
Okay, so what is that?
Oh, there's A threes.
This little sliver. No. See that little slip? No, see that tiny sliver?
I don't see anything else.
I'm sorry.
All right, I don't see any issues. Let's get it labeled, what we're doing. And make a motion to endorse?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Both abstained. All right, Waldo will sign this.
Just stand for a chance.
Yeah.
All right. Jack, is this the brush hill?
I never would have guessed they were doing that last time. Once we get that, we'll go on. We're signing the top card.
Yeah.
The Mylars, because they only record the Mylar. Okay, the hour being after seven oh five, we have a residents' hearing for Brush Hill subdivision.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Phil Mackey, Mackey and Mackey, 1256 Washington Street, New Orleans, Massachusetts, this is Councilman Ford on behalf of John Hassanjager. I'm aware that I'm late to this particular process, but nonetheless, I believe I'm up to speed at where we stand. It's my understanding that on January 3rd, Margaret has issued a last letter that said the catch patients have been cleaned out and then says that we either, Mr. Hassanjager needs to install trees or verify through the board that they're not required. It is my position that the street trees were required, and I have a copy of Margaret's letter here, and I also have an email. She has indicated that she's going to show up tonight, but she's at Finance Committee down the hall, so as I don't want to speak to her, I'll submit both her letter and her email, which basically says she checked with Ron Pebus, one of her, excuse me, previous, one of her inspectors, and the cases were in fact cleaned out. So for you, when Margaret gets very, hopefully, her first directly. As far as the street trees were concerned, and again, this is certainly the board's decision if this solution is adequate, but I am led to believe that Mr. Hassanjager spoke with the tree warden, and it was determined that per regulation, 24 trees were required. It is my understanding that he has planted nine of the trees, and that in accordance with his discussions with the tree warden, a fee of $100 per tree was agreed upon for the balance, and so 24 minus nine would be 15. And Mr. Hassanjager, in fact, has submitted a $1,500 check to the Board of Selectmen. Actually, I was the one who delivered it. I have here a copy of the letter stamped in. The Board of Selectmen, basically, on Tuesday, the Board authorized the town administrator to accept the check and not do anything further with it, because it's certainly pending up to this board's decision at the end of the evening. If things are satisfactory, the Board will vote to actually accept the gift at their next meeting, but currently, the check is with the town administrator. I also checked with Mr. LeBlanc, as I didn't want to speak for him, as you've said before. It's nice that I say it, but you'd like some backup. So I have a letter from Bob LeBlanc, which I believe he has also submitted directly to the board, but I have a copy here, just in case it hasn't made it. And it basically says, please be advised, developer, Mr. Hassanjager has contributed $1,500 towards the Waltham Parks Department. It is in keeping with the intent of the letter dated November 21st, 2016, and previous correspondence, which identified the quantities of trees needed to meet Rules and Regulations 5-12. As previously stated, the dollar amount calculated for trees corresponds to the available wholesale cost of one of the common trees. And then I have a, the email that he sent along with the letter, basically says, Phil, please find the attached letter to the planning board in relation to the gift, and the quantities of trees needed to complete the quantity, excuse me, the planning quantity. I have that for the board as well. And I understand that this has been a fairly contentious issue, but to the best of my knowledge, the two items that were outstanding have been addressed, and I have nothing further to present. However, I'm sure the board may have comments, and we'll be happy to address anything to the best of my ability that I can.
Okay. Were you informed about the street trees and what was supposed to happen? Because what you just said, it sounds like you got half of it. What was supposed to happen was the street trees requirement of the subdivision, they've been in our Rules and Regulations since 94, I got here in 92, and they go on private property. And we've had the case where the Walsh brothers just did it with Silverdore. We had a similar situation many years ago in Bowles Lane, where the help of God put them in. Everybody seems to forget to put them in, and the people came, and the choice was either take the trees, or the people, if they didn't want them, they either showed up, or they gave us a letter to the effect they don't want them, because what makes, being on private property, Phil, as you know?
Correct.
You could put the tree in at seven o'clock, 7:01, they cut it down, which made no sense. And since these are on private property, so what was supposed to happen was he was supposed to have, from each and every individual that didn't have trees in their yard, that required trees, either to say, I want them, or I'll waive it, I'll waive it. And that's where the money would go to the town, and it was like a hundred bucks a tree, which is a great deal, but still, that was said by the tree warden, what he wanted for money. So right now, I don't see anything from your side, or your client's side, that says, here are the people, I think it was six homes, homeowners, that didn't have the trees, and they should have come forth. The client should have had something from them, either saying, yes, I want it, and it'll go, naturally have to go this spring, or no, I don't, and I understand it'll be donated to the tree fund. Do you have anything to that effect?
I do. I apologize, as the letter that was sent out actually came from this board, I was unaware that you wanted responses from us, and I apologize for that. However, I have, let's see here, one email asking for trees. And I have one, two, three, four emails saying they do not want trees.
What are the dates of those? Back at the fall?
I have September 16th, September 21st, September 9th, September 19th, September 17th.
Yeah, that, we knew about that, but we're still missing six residents.
Respectfully, we can't force anyone as a private entity to send the letter to the town.
Okay, but respectfully, I like that term, is there's a decision that required the street trees to be there, and they're not there. It's in the decision. It's, you can't waive a decision, you can amend a decision, and that's been offered up too. So the issue is, these people have not responded one way or another. So to go forth, to me, in my opinion, is that if we went forth, we'd be clouding the title of these people, and the more important factor would be, and I'm not, certainly not going to vote to release at all, because I don't go against what is written and what the law is, but when it gets to Finance Committee and Town Meeting, and if the vote goes, if I'm the lone dissenter, I am certainly going to tell them why, because the street trees isn't there, and at some time in the future, they could come to the town demanding their tree, or even say, you took a tree away from me, and there could be some issues. But what will happen at Town Meeting is, the Town Meeting will, boop, timeout, and it would probably get voted down. And if it get voted down, now we got a real problem, because now we got a subdivision that no longer has a bond to it, and is no longer accepted. It's in limbo, and that's what you don't want to have, is something in limbo. Yes?
Yeah. Definitely, this has been a contentious issue from the very start, but I'll say this, and I'm only one of five here, I'm ready to proceed tonight. I'm ready to vote in favor, and I'm ready to get this contentious issue right behind us. There's no need for half this aggravation. What side of the check did you write to?
$1,500, it's a $100 tree.
You can't, you can't, you can only bleed the turnip so far, you know? Enough is enough, and I'm ready to roll tonight.
Good. This is chairman. Go. This is where, Phil, where we sort of left off last time, and in order to move this along, what I did was to contact the six residents in question who were, should have been given street trees according to the tree warden. There were 15 trees in question. I contacted Stephen Maury on February 7th, Susan Potter on the 15th, Ryan Lenhart on the 9th, this is all February, Denise Palumbo on February 10th, Gary Bean on February 9th, Lori Lurch, who's sitting here on February 9th as well. None of the residents, Mr. Chairman, want street trees. They're looking to get their street accepted, so what I would propose is that, in order to protect the town, as you so indicated, that these six people be sent letters from the town indicating and substantiating their conversation with me that they don't want street trees, even though they know that the street trees are for free. I made sure I clarified that with them, that was one of the big issues of contention last time. Apparently, some of the residents were misinformed about who would pay for those street trees, but they know that they're free street trees, and they don't want them. So what I would do is I would accept what they told me, and I would send, I would have the town send a letter under your signature, Mr. Chairman, confirming their conversation with me on these dates at these times, and basically that they agreed that they were not interested in receiving street trees, even though the street trees were for free. And then we could proceed with the residents' hearing, and put, ask the selectmen to put an article on the spring, open the warrant, and put the article on the spring annual town meeting, and sort of resolve this whole issue. I think the residents, from my conversation with the residents that I spoke to, a majority of them, and I invited them here to come to the meeting tonight, the residents' meeting, and they all got notices, they're anxious to have their street accepted. I would submit the report of who I called, their addresses, who I spoke to, the date I spoke to, the ti, and the time.
All right, so procedurally, I understand that the residents do want to have that be accepted, but procedurally, are we starting to set a precedent that regardless of the decision, are we now taking all the decisions and changing them? And where is that going to put us going forward? That's, I understand the angst of a 20-year-old subdivision that's looking to become accepted, but if we start changing the decisions that were handed down, what makes them all good if we're just going to change the mind later? You don't let people who want to make small modifications to plans be able to come in and do that without having to refile or do something else. So if we're going to put a change, I think that if they don't want it, I get that, but we have to do something to protect ourselves with changing our minds in the middle after the decision, not only was made, but it was made 20 years ago, that those trees would be there. How it got this far without even ever being in place, that we're talking about it 20 years later, is awful, which, you know, so that it's come to the point where people can ask for what they want. But I think we have to be careful of the procedure of what we're doing, and that we uphold what that whole subdivision book is for, and those are the rules, that's what was accepted when we took that plan in, albeit not any of us, but that's our job, is to make sure that that decision was made and that it's upheld, unless you want to bring something else forward to change up how that plan goes. This is my thought.
If the folks don't want the trees, they don't want the trees. But he has compensated the town with the $1,500.
I don't have a problem with that. Yeah, I don't have a problem with that, and I totally understand that part. I'm just saying, procedurally, how are you going to go forward the next time someone else wants to change a decision that the board has made, without going through some kind of proper channels, so that there's a paper trail as to why, and how do you do for some and not for others?
I think we'll have to vote at the board tonight, the five-member board, will decide that.
For this, but I'm talking about going forward on other, you know, like you need to start setting some kind, you know, that's what the decision's in place for. What do you want to do when you want to change your mind about how a decision went?
You vote.
You vote. That's why we have a five-member board here. Three-two, two-two.
Yeah, you can vote. Okay, that's very simple. What I really have an issue with is this gentleman has berated everybody, he's had letters of disinvite from this town hall, he's shown extreme contempt for everybody, and it's a 20-year-old subdivision, then it comes back and sits here, and we got to take care of his issues. That's, I, my personal, that's a personal problem, that he should take care of it. He made the money from this, he should have taken care of it. I can't help what happens with his customers, unfortunately, but he was required to do it, and now it gets dumped back at us, and we even went the extra step, and he still hasn't crossed the finish line. So I, you know, and it seems like, some people, we do a little extra fun, some people, we just cut them before they even get to the goal line, and that's an issue here, but it still comes down to the decision. It's in the decision, so.
Mr. Chairman, can I make a comment? I have a comment and a question. I think to, to reiterate what John just said, this has been part of our future for so long, we have to make it part of our past. I mean, this has been going on for 20 years, so respectfully, hearing what the, what some of the other board members are saying, and I understand that completely, it just gets to the point, I think, that a decision needs to be made one way or the other. The question I have for either members of this board that have more history with this, or for you, Phil, is, were the residents given a date where they needed to reply, yea or nay, on whether they wanted the trees?
In your letter, the last paragraph asked them to respond no later than September 22nd.
And there was an issue with, I just want to make sure I'm hearing this right, was there an issue with the information they got in making that decision? Is that what the problem was?
It was prior to that.
Yeah, that was prior to that?
They...
I just want to make sure I understand before I, before I...
Before that, they were told by the developer that they have to do it, if they don't, then they're going to get charged for the trees by the town, or something to that effect.
So their decision-making, trying to respond prior to that September 22nd date, was based on information that may not have been true, so they're not responding, or responding no, may have been because they thought they had a cost associated with it, correct?
Yeah.
Okay.
This letter was dated September 6th, and that made it very clear that what the developer said was incorrect.
Okay, so they were informed.
Anything prior to September 6th, they were misinformed.
All right, so I guess my question, my comment would be, if they were informed, they had a date, the ones that replied are on record, and the ones that didn't reply missed the deadline, as far as I'm concerned, and as much as I understand some of the angst on the board and about procedurally setting a precedent that we might not want to set, Liz, I really hear that, and that's important, but I think this needs to become part of the past, honestly, so. Those are my thoughts.
Well, since we have people here from Brush Hill, any resident have any questions, issues with this, that they find on their subdivision that's a problem? No?
We live there.
Can you come up? You're on TV, so. Smile.
Smile. Hi, my name is Jeff Lirsch. I live at 24 Arlington Lane. We bought our plot of land from John, I think it was 2013, built a home. We like it there. We were anxious to have the subdivision signed off, as has been indicated by others, and I know our neighbors feel the same way. We were very pleased that the curbs were put in, and the street was, a final coat was put on it, and we received, really, I think, two communications, if I'm not mistaken, one from Mr. Hassanjager, and then one from the town. We did not respond to Mr. Hassanjager, we spoke to, my wife spoke to Joe, and he was correct. We have no interest in trees in our front yard. We don't see a need, we have plenty of trees, and so that's where we're at on it. So we would like to see the subdivision signed off on, that's why we're here, and if there's money set aside that can be used appropriately for other town, you know, plannings, whether it's in our subdivision or not, I think that's appropriate resolution. I liked your comment, Mark, when you said, I think people that haven't responded are really, they had their chance, so they didn't respond, and I would agree with that. So those are my thoughts.
Okay. Put a question to you, Mr. Mackey. It'll be a legal one, but if the board deems, and they let it go, do you see in the future a problem on somebody's title, that they could be picked up and figure out what happened here?
No, I don't.
And why?
There's nothing, whether they get a tree or not, that is going to affect their ability to sell mortgage or otherwise. A title examination is not, well, they, more likely than not, a title examination for a residential house is not going to go back to the subdivision plan and look for trees. And more specifically, in this one, and I completely agree with you, the decision did not waive the requirement for trees, just so we're clear on that, but the decision did waive delineating them on the plan. And I actually talked with Phil Senior, who did the subdivision, and the reason was, because it was an entire forest at the time, and it made no sense to try and figure out where the trees went, because they could just not cut down trees and make the, make things happen. 20 years later, things should have been clearer, and I think they'd be written differently today, but nonetheless, there is nothing that I, as a title examiner, would say clouds the title, or puts the town in jeopardy, especially if you take Mr. Morasky's suggestion and finally close the loop, saying you haven't responded, you did talk, and it's your understanding that the matter is done.
All right, last question to you. Would that prohibit somebody coming up later and saying, where's my street tree, to the Because the town's the one, in effect, took the tree away from them by waiving it and accepting it?
After the current owners, right now, sell their property, no future owner has any claim against the town. In my opinion.
Okay, now, what is your client, how is he going to set up the rest of the lots that are built upon? Is that still?
I believe those weren't counted in the street changes.
I understand, but they still need street trees, one way or another. If they clearcut it, then you're still, does he have a plan for that?
I honestly don't know.
Okay. Because if they clearcut it, now we're back in the same spot again. What you said was true, it was all trees, and maybe you save a couple, which I understand, which makes sense, but now if it comes in clearcuts, now you don't have those again. Unfortunately, at that time, if it gets waived and everything, we don't have a bond on it.
Though, once the street is accepted, again, should the board vote to do so, and it becomes a public way, it's no different than anyone else buying a lot, if it was clearcut to the street, you bought a lot that's clearcut to the street, there's no, I can't, for instance, on Washington Street, come back and say, I don't have a street tree, the town owes me one, because back when it was done, they should have trees, nor can anyone else. It's, it's a matter of difference, because currently, it's not a public road, it's still under the jurisdiction of the board, and the plan absolutely controls.
Had these street trees been on town property, we wouldn't be doing this.
Correct.
Because it's private, and then the deeds and everything else, and what can happen after? That's why I'm bringing it all up.
Yep.
It's my job here.
Absolutely.
Don't waive the magic wand and make everybody happy. Certainly don't do it to me on this particular one, and what I will say is, this is 20 years later, and the big bum's rush is put on, we got to get it on for the spring, which I also object to, so 1998, this was approved. Any, any other member of the public on?
Steve Maury, 3 Hancock. I did speak to Joe, he called me to answer Mark's points. We did get a letter from the town, it did say they're free of charge, and it did say, reply by this date, which I did, I sent an email to whoever was on that initial letter. I don't want a tree, I don't want trees. Not that I'm here bragging, I was the first resident... resident in that development probably twelve years ago. The fact that the town, and I'm not casting blame here, is now coming forward and bringing up this tree thing, that was never brought to my attention until this whole hubbub came recently, so I think the residents want the street accepted, it's been a long time. I know that there's issues between the town and John, John and the town, I don't really care, I'm a taxpaying resident, it's time to move on, I don't want a tree, accept the street, and let's just move forward. Thank you.
Okay, just for clarification, the street trees have been there, what happens is, we do a punch list to make sure every, that's why you're here, in case we didn't find something.
Yeah, good, yeah.
That's why, get the drains cleaned and everything else, that's the whole purpose. A lot of times, the stuff doesn't come up until the very end.
Yeah.
Most of it's usually the buried stuff, like, "Where's the gate valve?" or something like that, but this is a little bit different.
Yep, no, understood.
Okay, anyone else? It's a residents' hearing. Mr. Hamilton, are you a resident of Brush Hill? Gonna buy a lot there?
Phil Hamilton, precinct five. I just wanted to let the planning board know that I did get street trees, but they don't last forever. One died, and the other one is not in great shape because of the salting of the streets, because the street trees were placed, placed close to the road. So I don't see any jeopardy in not having street trees, even though you're entitled to them, as I was, 'cause I no longer have one of them, I only have one left, and it may not last that long. So, I think you should just take care of the issue, thank you.
It's like growing oil, that's very clear.
You can clearcut. We're over, it's over. No, once you release everything, it's gone. How many lots are there that are not built on, round numbers? Uh, how many lots not built?
Three, I believe.
Three? And they're working on one, I believe, right?
I think so.
It's all hacked up or whatever, running over it, so they couldn't have put anything in, yeah, so we're talking about four, well, four out of the...
I don't think John owns that one.
The one they're doing?
I don't believe so, but I'm not entirely sure.
But there are three vacant ones, I know, down towards the end, and then that one that they've been built on, and you can't tell right now, until they're all done, what they're gonna do.
Right.
So, yeah, 'cause once...
Once we do this, he's off the hook for those.
Yeah, you're off the hook forever, you can clearcut whatever he wants to do, so we don't have any, any issues.
Okay, that's the downside of this, but the, but the upside is the fact that we're just gonna get rid of it.
Okay. Alright, Mr. Morasky?
I'd like to submit a motion to accept my report of contact with the six residents of Brush Hill subdivision.
I second that.
Okay, any discussion? Alls in favor?
Aye. I'd also like to submit a motion to send letters to those six residents that I contacted, confirming my conversation with them, that they waive their right to street trees.
Second.
Okay, discussion?
Yeah, I'll add something, that if we're gonna do it right, and they wanna get it accepted, I wanna be on solid ground myself, just let it goes to town council, I know what it's gonna say anyway, I mean, I could write it right now, everything's...
That's a better idea.
It's a town council, so that anything gets raised, it's all back on them, unless you wanna do it.
I think, I'm happy to, but I think the board would be more comfortable if your own attorney wrote it.
Can I put that in there, so we're all on solid ground?
Absolutely.
You don't count, Phil, Joe.
Fine.
Okay, we have a, so, we had a motion, a second, alls in favor of doing that, say aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Probably motion to close the public hearing.
Yes.
I can do it without a doubt.
Yeah, I will, but I'm thinking before I close it, do we need in town, with that, 'cause it's kinda outside the, we should ask town council how, what the timeframe is and how it be sent.
On how?
When she, when we send the letter, when she answers, are we on solid ground, she should tell us how it needs to go, and what is the timeframe.
Certified.
So if someone says, "Oh, I was in Florida," or whatever, should it go certified, should it go federal, or should it just go regular mail?
Certified is fine.
No, but I'm, let, let town council say, "This is fine, you need to send it, give them X amount of days." She should spell it out, 'cause this is different than we've ever done before.
Okay.
Alright?
So, you want, you wanna leave this meeting, meeting open?
Yeah, we gotta leave it, 'cause we're not done yet.
Okay.
But what I'm saying is, as long as, you know, Copeland Page tells us, yes, what you wanna do is fine, here's how it should read, and here's the timeframe you should give them to respond, and then if they don't respond, she should tell us, you know, it's all over, and also, if it goes certified, or regular mail, whatever.
Okay. Then, would this public hearing then be continued to a later date?
Yeah.
So, I would make a motion that it be continued to our next regular meeting at seven AM.
PM.
Why are we doing that? They already got a letter, I don't see why we need to have them respond again.
No, they don't have to respond again, we, I think the chair, what the chairman wants is, he wants town council to come back to us with the letter, right?
Yeah, say, "This is fine."
And then you want the...
If they respond, they respond, and if she says they don't, they, within this amount of time, it's...
I think that's crazy.
I think that's doing it again, we already, I think we already did that in September.
You're going to the motions again?
I mean, if we wanna do that just to have a paper trail and to reaffirm the fact that they don't want them, then that's fine, but I think we've already done it.
Let's take an up or down vote, and move, move.
So a mo- motion to close the public hearing, then?
Second.
Okay, a second, alls in favor of closing the hearing?
Aye.
Okay. Okay, so make the motion.
Oh, yeah, aye. No, I said it, it's not asking about it, but...
And a motion to relieve, release the bond and accept the streets on the Brush Hill subdivision, namely Hancock Court from station zero, 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 two, six plus zero, seven oh point six six, plus or minus, Arlington Lane, station zero, plus zero, zero, two, eleven, plus five, three point seven two, plus or minus, and Evergreen Lane, station zero, plus zero, zero, two, two, plus seventy, point nine seven, plus or minus, and that the Board of Selectmen be asked to put a article on the town warrant for the spring annual town meeting, that these streets at these stations be accepted by the town.
Second for discussion.
Well, one of the discussions is, you know, it's, it's no secret that this has already been, already done, the done deal's already been done, the twenty-eighth, they're gonna reopen it, so, that's, I mean, this, this was set up a long time ago, so... Any further discussions? Okay, alls in favor of releasing, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Aye. Just what I like, when you deal with it, somebody like that. Lovely. No, you didn't give me a phone, I just put everything out of that clip. Okay. Yeah, okay, Winter Hill, alright, I went to Hill, I'm sorry, yeah. Winter Hill gang, Freudian, that was on the other night, Mr. Walsh, we have Winter State Subdivision.
Robert Walsh, from TWR LLC. We're here this evening to ask the board to schedule a resident meeting, as well, as well as trying to get us on the spring warrant for acceptance. To best of my knowledge, the punch list is pretty well, is completed, and we, would we also request a release of bond if possible.
Mr. Maggie. Okay, did we do this as a hearing, Kate?
I'm sorry?
This is done as a hearing?
Is it residents' hearing, though? Because last time, we were waiting to hear from Maggie. She was just on here.
Alright, we have two items here, one of them is the grass plots, and she talks about the paved late fall during November, there appears to be some surface that may need attention. Can you speak to that, Bob?
Yes. The paving is, is fine, we have a letter from LaRusso stating they observed it, and they have, it looks fine to them, and the day we paved, there were two people from the engineering department up there with the heat guns all day long, checking every load, as well as the thickness of pavement, et cetera, so there's really nothing wrong with the pavement, we did tell Maggie we'd wait until March to release the bond, so it did go, the hot top did go through in winter.
So, I'll read it in some time.
But I mean, there's nothing wrong with the hot top, it's just she wanted it to go sit longer.
Okay, it says, "The developer had paved the streets in late fall during November, during November."
Right.
But that's fine, all plants are open, town still paved in November and December, there appears to be some areas of surface of the pavement that may need attention, so this department recommends the full bond not be released until winter's over, and it can be examined for acceptability in the spring. We would agree with a timeframe for this evaluation, approximately mid-March, and a report given to the board at that time. Okay, so, what we have is, we have an opinion based upon, it's unraveling, we have no stations, we have nothing to that effect, it just says, "I think it's unraveling," that's what I read here. You never made, you never got on that, Liz, did you?
No, they didn't need me.
Okay. Alright, any questions, comments? Joe?
Well, Maggie has basically a couple of items that she wants held, so I'm not sure that we can do anything at this particular point in time. And so you won't, our potential planning board meetings after today, a March second, March sixteenth, spring doesn't begin till March twentieth, and you've got town meeting May first, so we only have two meetings in April, in order to determine, at best, I'm not sure that, that you can get on a, a town warrant until the fall, for a street acceptance. Do you see it? I'm, I'm just submitting our thoughts for the boards.
Yep. Okay. You all set? Liz?
Well, here we go, you know what I mean, this is how come something lasted twenty years, too, we're talking about grass, right?
Yeah.
How are we gonna see if grass is grown, right? Is that what happened over at Brush Hill? With, with the trees, you know? He paved the street, yes? He paved it, yep.
Trees, tree trees.
And you, you, see, you, you planted the grass, that's what looks like she's got open here on January thirty-first, right?
Prior to that, I believe.
Right, but she's got this punch list number five dated January thirty-first, do you have that?
Oh, it could be dated January thirty-first.
Yep.
January twenty-fifth.
I have a, I have one with thirty-first. So she has two items on that, it's about the grass and about some surface of, some areas of the surface of the pavement that might need attention. So...
But as, as we stand here now, it does not need attention.
Alright, so you're gonna have the heaves like we have on every street when it's frost, and it's not frost, so, and she's got your whole bond, are you looking for a whole bond release?
I'm not certain if it's a whole bond or a partial, I think it's the whole bond.
Well, if you want it released to go to town meeting, it has to be everything.
It's every, yeah, oh, to ask for a release, yeah, whatever remains, if it's the whole one, fine, if it's not, whatever remains, I think.
If it's a partial bond release, it could be no more than twenty-five percent of the...
Right, but he's looking to get the street accepted, it's...
Yeah.
So...
We even got streetlights working up there, so...
It's not, it's a good thing, isn't it?
Maggie left? Nice. Mark?
I don't know, I'm good.
John?
Yeah. In fact, I was over there today, because I was reading Maggie's, Margaret's comments, town engineer. I share her concerns, I see ravelling in a lot of areas. Blacktop, I, I'd say in places that you'd put down better with a shovel. The seam in the middle, it seems to be separating again. The granite, everything else looks perfect, the subdivision is, is beautiful, but you have this issue with the unraveling, the, the finish coat you put on, never should be done in a vandal. You need, with the binder coat, for that second coat to take properly, you need, as far as I understand, sixty degrees to make it work. And what I've seen, I've seen a lot of ravelling, I share Maggie's concerns, I spent a lot of times on there today, taking a look on my way home, and I, I don't think we're ready for residents' hearing, because these two issues are too big, you know, and we, we have no street lighting yet in operation, and I think we should probably go on to advise the town engineer and wait in the spring, to see how, how this roadway turns out, after this plowing and so on. But I was sorely disappointed in the, in the, in the finished paving. That's, that's it.
Okay, I'll address the street lighting, so everybody understands, the street lighting is not the, the, it's not in the hands of the developer, the developer cuts a check to the Eversource, Enstar, whoever it may be, and the amount to pay for them to pull the lines, put the transformers in, buy the poles, and all the developer does after that is set the basis where it's shown on the plan. After that, it's between the town and the town engineer, so when, when they get hooked up, when they get up, has nothing to do with developers, all the town engineer coordinates that with Eversource, so they're completely out of it, so whether they're wired or not has nothing to do with it, because it's going to be the town's pole, and that's how Eversource views it. So the developer has no control over that, whether they get lit today, tomorrow, and as a matter of fact, they're the ones, the town has to put in the order to say, "Go put the poles up," so they're, they're at the mercy of when the order gets put in. Regarding the, the pavement, I looked at it, done this long enough, it didn't seem bad to me, what, what, I guess disappoints me is if, and I'm a contractor, and if I got a punch list like this, it doesn't tell me anything where, doesn't give me a station, doesn't tell me where nothing's painted, if you have issues where it can't be the whole street, it doesn't say the whole street, it just appears, and it says, "There appears that some areas..." Well, I, those should've been identified, so that the applicant could've taken care of it, so right now, he can't even take care of it, even if he wants to. So, and in regards to paving, the paving, they can pave as long as the plants are open, there's no state requirement when they can pave, as long as it's...
There were two, Ron and Chris from the engineering were there the entire day with the little heat guns, they checked every load, it was, I have the weather report for the day, it was a nice day for that time of year. They measured the thickness, there was, they spent the whole day there, morning to evening, even when we finished up.
You definitely can't work hot top in November, the way you can in July and August and those months, because it doesn't, it doesn't just roll out here, you know?
Could you get, could you get something from your, the, the guys who do it, from the quality control?
We have a, a letter from LaRusso, Bob.
Oh, it is, where is it?
You tell, you folks have it, I believe. As well as the, I think you also have the, the weather for the day.
Yeah, we have all of that.
This is from Northeast Transportation. Is that what you're talking about? Yeah, but you have a letter from them, we have a, we have a board member that indicates when to pave and when you can't, so what you need to do is get something to back it up for... So what you need to do is get something to back it up from a professional, that, you know, that they do this and when they can and when they can according to all the state standards because our roads are based on the past DOT blue book. Now, that's just a, that's more like a test as opposed to, to statements.
I'm only telling you what I observed from the...
Yeah, but you also talked about when they can and can't pave, so I'd like to fill that out. You've made a note so we can get that from them.
We can pave now if we want, but it's not a whoon fee.
And then we'll never get to town meeting.
Or it should be.
Well, you know, unfortunately, we talk about this, these guys had to find out, verify the color of the blue for the hydrant. And there was a missing bolt, I understand. I mean, sometimes, to me, I, I really strongly object to having a punch list that is as wide open as far. I understand the grass plots, they didn't come up, but the fact that didn't identify where, condemning the whole street and when it's a wait-see attitude. So if it is unraveling, it's no good, so then there's nothing to wait for, it should be fixed. That's all. Okay, what's the pleasure of the board? Someone make a motion? He's asking for a release, so...
A total, a total release with a residence hearing?
Yeah.
In the second meeting of March.
Well, you don't, no, no. You, you release it at the sec, you release it at the residence hearing.
Mm-hmm.
That's what he's looking for. Could you have it put on the warrant and then pull it back?
Why not? They, they're for someone else who put everybody through hoops. Yeah, because March 16th will be our next 16th?
March 2nd.
Oh, no. But they said mid-March.
Yeah, so it would be the 16th.
The 16th.
We do the residence hearing.
The one is close, but they're gonna make a special, special for our Brush Hill developer.
Well, I thought it was going on.
Ooh, they're gonna do it on the 28th. They haven't done it yet.
No, they have a, they have a, according to the Slutman's meeting, I thought that Jim Johnson said they have an article which was pulled, and if we accepted Brush Hill, they were gonna insert Brush Hill into that number that was already pulled.
But they can still open it anytime.
I don't know when this...
But they have the ability...
When does this go to print? That's the other thing. When does this...
Not in April. But they can put it in. They can ask them for a placeholder.
And when do you want a residence hearing?
On the 16th.
Then you'll still not know about, uh...
No, it said mid, mid-March in here, per the town.
Yeah.
They agreed to mid-March.
Do it for mid-March. You could do the March 16th meeting.
Maggie agreed with the second meeting, so you could use...
15th is close to mid-March you're gonna get.
So that they can go through a winter. That's what it's got. But if you submitted the article at least now so that they don't miss a whole cycle...
You could still get snow in March, so...
They said, yeah, well, they plow the street and...
And in Margaret's comments, didn't she say...
She mentioned March.
March, April.
No, she said mid-March.
Oh, no.
The second planning board meeting.
We would agree with the timeframe for this evaluation for the approximate mid-March report to be given the board at that time. So, mid-March.
That's fine. If she, she flips up here, it's, it's fine. Me.
Okay.
So, the finisher?
Make a motion to put, ask the Slutman for a placeholder for this, for the civil to drive?
Second.
Second. Any further discussions? Polls in favor?
Aye.
Most. And we'll have a residence hearing on the 15th.
Right.
Not the 15th or 16th?
March 16th.
16th, I'm sorry, 16th. Want to do it the 17th?
No.
Yeah. Johnny didn't get that together the other night either. Okay. All right. Brush Hill, okay. Since we're by it, why don't we take what we know is out of order, out of order?
What are you gonna do?
Union, Liberty, whatever you wanna call it. Union Square Village. Wasn't that Liberty? Wasn't it called Liberty?
No, Liberty is...
Liberty's the boundary.
Oh, I thought they, I thought the plans had, okay. It's a union, okay. I might have gotten them confused.
You're gonna recuse him somehow? Are you doing current severance?
Yeah. Give it to Liz. Open, close it.
Yes, you will. I gotta read this first, all right?
Yeah, well, you gotta make the...
Yeah.
Just say it's past the hour of, whatever.
Let me see where he is. Okay, see, in the hour is past 7:30. Uh, we're gonna take, uh, Union Square Village, 48 Burns Ave. Um, so the public hearing for the Union Square Village is now open. Read it.
I'm, I'm recusing because I'm butter.
You should just read Lou's letter first.
Well, you gotta read the whole...
Yeah, read the public hearing notice and then Lou's letter.
So I'm being, I'm only sitting here because I'm not gonna walk down and back in 15 seconds.
Okay, that's fine. So, um, notice hereby given that the planning board of the town of Wallpole will hold, will hold a public hearing in the town hall main meeting room on Thursday, February 16th, 2017, at 7:30 PM on application received from Wall Street Development Corporation, PO Box 272, Westwood, Mass. 02090, case number 17-1, for property located at 48 Burns Avenue, end of Burn Ave, East Wallpole, Mass., and shown as assessors map 20 parcels 119, 136, and 137. Zoning District, it's general residence. The applicant is requesting a site plan review under section 13 of the zoning bylaw to allow construction and development of 1414 detached single-family condominium homes with associated improvements, including but not limited to access drives, utilities, parking, stormwater management, as shown on the plan entitled Union Square Village, dated December 10th, 2016, prepared by GLM Engineering Consultants, Inc., 19 Exchange Street, Halston, Mass. 02746, as may be amended. Plans are on file in the planning board office and may be viewed during regular planning board hours. That being read, Chairman John Conroy has recused himself therefore tonight. Season of butter, and going forward, there will only be four members sitting on this hearing. Um, I have this letter dated February 13th, um, to the town of Wallpole. The application site plan approval dated December 28th, 2016, Union Square Village. Dear Mr. Chairman, recent information brought to Wall Street's attention last week will require certain revisions to the proposed development plans associated with the above referenced application for site plan approval for Union Square. Therefore, please accept this letter as a formal request to continue without testimony the public hearing scheduled for the proposed project entitled Union Square Village until April 20th, 2017, at the, at 7:30 PM. In addition, it is requested that the time for the planning board to issue a decision be extended until April 30th, 2017. Any revised plans will be submitted for review at least two weeks prior to the date of the rescheduled hearing. Thank you for your consideration in this matter. Wall Street, we have chosen. So, um, motion to accept an extension of time on which to take this action up.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
What date would you like?
So, uh, the motion to continue this hearing without testimony to April 20th at 7:30 as requested by the applicant. Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Um, okay, so motion to close tonight's hearing without testimony.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Okay, so the public hearing for the Union Square Village, case number 17-1, has been continued without testimony to, to Thursday, April 20th, 2017, at 7:30 PM, as requested by the applicant. The hearing will be held in the main meeting room here at the town hall, and no further notice will be given to any of the factors that a notice was given to.
Can I get one? I don't get one.
You don't get one? No, you're, you're not getting another notice. Just pass that down. Okay. You're all set.
Yeah, I'll be in after 7:28. We have Cochran, 95 West Street. Continued hearing?
Mr. Chairman, Phil Mache, National Republican, Six Washington Street, Northern Massachusetts, is counsel on four on behalf of the applicant. Um, it was about a month ago that we gave our initial presentation, and we talked about everything but parking. So I'm asking, and we're prepared to lead off with the parking presentation season. However, I'm just asking if it's the preference of the board to ask questions about what was previously presented before we do the parking conversation, we'll see that, and then get a couple of questions again.
Um, well, big question for ya. I understand we just cleared another back 40 of trees for plants, true? Did you guys submit your...
Oh, yes, we did. But those are not, they weren't submitted 14 days ago, weren't they?
No, I understand. So, I mean, any questions right now might be premature without us seeing these?
Um, I don't think so. They were mainly in response to conservation comments.
But, but the thing is...
We're trying to make sure that every board has the same plan, and no one's missing.
Why would you do that?
Well...
It's gonna be different than most.
I've heard, it's a pure method. And so, um, it's our intention, based on any questions that come out tonight, for us, again, to go back 40, if you will, um, and, and plans, again, to all three boards, hopefully incorporating all of the comments from all of the boards.
Okay. All right, what's the pleasure? Mr. Murtaugh, what do you wanna do? Do you wanna go ahead now, or do you wanna wait till after the next one, or do you need anything right now other than the parking?
Parking.
All right, so that will have to be the next hearing?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. Mark?
Uh, no, I, I'm interested in the parking as well, so...
Okay. Liz?
Uh, the parking first.
Joe?
I guess it's parking first.
Parking first, okay. So, you can take a seat, and we will continue after, if we do have any questions. Just to leave it open, all right, just to...
Absolutely. With me is Steve Shinar, our parking consultant. Excuse me, Sean. Well, take your keys back there. Didn't start that one out very well. Nonetheless, Sean Kelly's here from VAI, who's done the parking study, and I'll turn it over to him. Sorry about that. I promise.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Again, for the record, my name is Sean Kelly. I'm a traffic engineer with the Nassan Associates. On behalf of the project team, I'd like to thank you again for having us before you tonight. What I'd like to do tonight is just take a few minutes to walk you through our parking study, how it was conducted, what our findings were, what our recommendations are, and then I'd be happy to answer any questions that members of the board or the audience might have. Uh, the purpose of our study is pretty straightforward. We, we went out and evaluated the existing parking supply and demand characteristics in the vicinity of the site. We've looked at future parking conditions with the residence, the Wallpole Station project in place, and then we, again, have made some recommendations to ensure parking is, is managed adequately. So, the first, um, the first step in our study really was to do an inventory of the existing parking conditions as they are today. And what we did is we, we cordoned the parking areas off into 10 distinct areas, and they're color-coded, so the red areas are parking that today is utilized by the Wallpole Station Business Park, and the blue are areas that are utilized by MBTA commuters. And I'll, and I'll walk you through each of those. Lots one, two, and three, they're fairly straightforward. These are surface parking lots that are adjacent to the, to the office complex and across the street. Um, this is, this large lot here is, is cordoned off by Jersey Barrier. The eastern portion of it is used by employees of the center, and the western part is used by commuters. So, again, these three are, are utilized by the station, rather, by the, by the office park. Um, lots four, five, and six are also owned by the office park, they're, but they are currently leased to MBTA commuters. There's 41 spaces in what we call the upper lot near the station. There's 140 spaces down off of West Street, and then there's another lot which people typically call the dirt lot, Lot 6, which is, again, also today under existing conditions, leased to MBTA commuters. Uh, the MBTA themselves also have three additional lots, I'm sorry, four additional lots. There's the Spring Street Lot, which is 64 spaces. There are, what we've cordoned off is two different lots, um, over at, by the station itself, lots eight and nine, which combined have 79 spaces. And then there's a large lot, um, over on the eastern side of Route 27, which has 200 spaces. So, in, in summary today, the, the parking conditions that they are now, there are a total of 960 parking spaces. But 619 of them are currently provided for use by the MBTA. 341 are currently provided for use by the office park. And when you look at the, the actual demand that we saw out there, what we have is 233 spaces available. Um, when I talk about the demand, what we did is we actually went out here at 4:00 in the morning until 8:00 at night, and, and once an hour, every hour, we went to each and every one of these lots and actually counted the number of cars that were parked there. As you can imagine, at 4:00 in the morning, there isn't a whole lot going on out here. Between the hours of 7:00 and 8:00, you start to see the, the MBTA lots fill up.
I get it.
8:00 to 9:00, you start to see the lots utilized by the office park fill up. And the, the peak demand, when, when things are highest, is actually, it's coincident for both uses. It's 11:00 in the morning. At 11:00, when, when all the commuters are there and they've gone to work, you have a total of 419 cars parked for the commuter rail, and there were a total of 308 cars parked, um, for the, for the business park. And again, that's, these both occur at the same time at 11:00 in the morning. Next slide. The next step is we, we look at the parking demand characteristics based on the, the future condition where you have the resident project built, and also we reconfigured the use of a lot of the parking areas, and I'll, and I'll walk through that. So, from a, from a color-coded standpoint, red still represents the office park, blue still represents the MBTA, the orange color now represents parking that would be allocated to the residents of the facility, and then the green is, is the commercial garage, which, which will house a mix of tenants that I'll get into. We've done this parking study in a very conservative way. Typically, well, not typically, but, but in reality, the office park and the MBTA have a, have a complete polar opposite demand characteristics of the residents. That is, their, their traffic starts to come in at 7:00, 8:00 in the morning, and it builds up until you get to 11:00 in the morning when it's at its peak. The, the proposed development, the residences, is the exact opposite. They start to shed and, and leave the site at 7:00, 8:00 in the morning, and they're gone all day. They don't start coming back until 5:00 in the afternoon, and actually, their peak period is really not 11:00 in the morning, it's 11:00 at night when everyone's home, everyone's gone to bed, that's when it peaks. When we did our study, what we did is, is we assumed a very, very conservative scenario where we said, let's assume that the 235 spaces that we need for the residence based on ITE actually occurs at 11:00 AM. So what we've done is, we're, we're running analysis that says we wanna make sure that all of these things work coincidentally. Now, this is never gonna happen in reality. People at 11:00 in the morning aren't gonna still be here, they'll be at work, and the cars will be gone. But for the purpose of our study, we've said, let's assume all the commuters are there, parked, and they've gone on the train, they're left, all the employees are there at 11:00, and then all the residents are also there, and do we have, can we meet the, the required demand? And the, and the major changes in terms of the allocation are as such, the, the parking that was in this area that had previously been allocated to the commuters, as well as the dirt lot, would essentially get shifted. And the bulk of that fills up this 200-space lot that today is, is fairly underutilized. Um, there's also some demand provided as needed for the, for the commuters within the private garage. The residents would take up the bulk of the parking that's located on West Street. Some of that parking would still be allocated to the, uh, office park. There's also surface parking for the residents within the, the project itself, and then some in the garage also. Uh, when you go through it all, what we have is a condition where in the future, we would have a total of 975 spaces provided. We provide the required parking to meet the residents, we provide the required parking to meet the MBTA, and there's actually a 60-space surplus within the garage. The only, the only thing that doesn't, isn't met based on this conservative analysis in the office park where we're showing a shortfall of 40 spaces. the office park, where we're showing a shortfall of forty spaces, but, but again, that is not something that will actually occur in reality, because when these spaces are needed, the resident parking that's located here will, will be gone, they'll be heading to work in the morning. So, ultimately, when we look at a shared parking analysis of what, what would happen with, with the real-life condition, there will always be a surplus of anywhere from a hundred-and-twenty-five to three-hundred spaces. But even if you looked at it from the, the most conservative viewpoint, which we did, which is say, everything peaks at the same time at eleven AM, it would only be a forty-space shortfall for the, for the, the office park, which, again, would, would be met in this resident parking when they go to work. Next slide. There was also, we understand, some concern relative to, will the displacement of commuter parking from the West Street Lot up to the MBTA Lot, will that cause people to, you know, fill downtown lots where they shouldn't be parking long-term? We've looked at it from a convenience standpoint, we've looked at the travel times in terms of pedestrian walking paths, even if you're in this MBTA Lot here, it's no, it's no shorter to be in downtown, you can be in the municipal lot, or the downtown lot right off One A, it's, it's slightly shorter, it's a five-minute walk versus a six- or nine-minute walk, but, but there really is no, no benefit in terms of a, from a comfort or convenience to, to park in these lots versus parking in the MBTA Lot. And that's really, you know, what we've, our, our report in a nutshell, you know, in terms of recommendations, you know, we, we recommend that both the resident project, as well as the office park, continue to, or, or implement a, a parking demand, and a parking management plan where they, you know, orientation materials given to residents, they know what the parking policies are, both the employees and residents have to have stickers that are placed on their car, regular sweeps of the parking lot, to the extent that there's illegal parkers, they'll be towed out of there to ensure they're not taking up space they shouldn't be. And with these measures in place, we're confident that this project will not only meet the demand, but again, based on the shared parking analysis, at, at any given time, there should be at least a hundred-and-twenty-five surplus spaces available. That's really what I have for tonight, I'd be more than happy to answer any questions that members of the board might have. Thank you.
Wait, John?
I was up on the site, it's a top-up inside right now.
Sure.
And definitely would be an improvement, but the full traffic that bring downtown, but it comes back to parking, and that's my major concern.
Sure.
You're talking about a hundred-and-ninety-two units, is that correct?
That's correct, yep.
Yeah, so, you said the amount of spaces available at any time will be two-hundred-and-thirty-five?
That the two-thirty-five represents the, the peak parking demand, correct? That's, well, that's what they will need.
Is that, is that sufficient to, to take care of the hundred-and-ninety-two units?
This is, this is based on what's known as ITE data, it's published by the Institute of Transportation Engineers, it's the, it's the national, and it's, it's also the state's source, it's the required data set that we use to do these analyses, so, what it tells us is that you tell, you put, input a certain number of units, the ITE data tells you how much parking you would need, and for this number of units, it tells you the peak demand will be two-hundred-and-thirty-five spaces.
Yeah.
I would point out that, as part of our work, your, your town did hire a peer-view consultant who reviewed these numbers, and they, and they had signed off on them, but this is, this is based on national industry data.
So, you're talking about the gravel lot?
The, the dirt lot, correct.
Dirt lot, sorry. Um, what?
Can we go back a bit?
Yeah, sorry.
How many spaces?
Uh, that today is a ninety-five space lot.
Ninety-five, ninety-five. Um, yeah, ninety-five.
And, and again, today, today it's commuters, but under the proposed plan, that would be where the residents would, would shift up to. The res, I'm sorry, the employees that park in, in this lot here would essentially move up to the dirt lot.
Was that gravel pan, plan part of the overall site plan ever?
You know, I, that's not a, I'm not, I'm not sure of that.
Yeah, oh, yeah. Um, oh, for the, for the peak demand. I'll leave it at that for now.
Mark?
Did you, in, when you were acquiring this many spaces and moving lots around different uses, did you make the spaces smaller than they are currently to accommodate that many?
No, the, the parking that's provided, you're saying the lots that are controlled by the office park today?
Yeah.
No, the, the spaces that are provided today are, mirror the spaces that are, were projected in the future, so we didn't do anything to squeeze more spaces in or modify it, it's basically, what we have today would be used, in the future, would just be allocated differently to different uses.
My, my concern is not simply the parking, it's, it's really the parking and combined with the traffic, because the reality of it is, you potentially have a hundred-and-ninety-two units of people, let's say half of them take the train, which would be a home run, I doubt that will happen, but...
Right.
You're gonna have people literally coming and going at the same time. People getting on the train and people driving to work, and if you've driven down that, any of those streets surrounding that area, it's not the easiest, you know, it's not a major thoroughfare, that is, people darting in and out, people walking from every direction, as you can see. And I think ideally, you'd like them to use the MBTA Lot up behind East Street, but it's crazy down there, and I think that's why people park downtown, it might be a little bit of a longer walk, but you take less of your life in your own hands coming from that direction than you do coming from Elm Street. I guess, to me, it just seems like we're jamming a lot into that one area, and I guess, you know, it, it's not gonna change my view on the project, but it's, it's a concern for me, I would like to see, and I know the ship has probably sailed, but I would like to see a parking structure, perhaps on two and five, that could accommodate many more spots more comfortably, whether that's multi-level or what it is. It just seems, it's very spread out, you're gonna have a lot of people walking, a lot of people driving, and that's great in July, but it's not so good in January. Just a, just a concern, it's gonna be very, in my opinion, hectic in that area at a couple of times a day. It is now, without the hundred-and-ninety-two units.
True.
How's that?
Yeah.
Okay, Liz?
So, you're just talking about parking right now, right?
Yeah.
Okay, so, for the hundred-and-ninety-two units that are gonna go there, so I'm not gonna get into that, but, the parking, so, part of that, you're gonna have, there's an underground garage for some of it, but, so, the parking that we're talking about for that building, which I believe is two, right? Or is it the five and four?
The parking for the residence, it's, it's predominantly in lots five and four, then there are also, I believe, ten spaces within the garage itself.
Now, is that for a fee, that parking? Is that for a fee to the resident?
I don't know if that's...
Surface spaces.
Not, not the surface spaces, no.
Okay, so, if that, so, is there anything that makes that resident-only parking, like, are they gonna be jockeying for the commuters for that, like, does somebody own that spot besides Manzo themselves, like, how are we policing that?
These spaces now, you, it would be clearly signed that you have to have a permit, so if someone that wanted to park there for the MBTA illegally, they're, they're gonna get told.
So, there is a fee to park there? To the resident, 'cause that's, is that considered, that's what you wanna make it, resident parking?
The, the orange would be resident parking, and the red would be parking for the business park, but either, whether you're a resident or whether you're an employee, you're gonna have to have something on your car, whether it's a sticker or whatever it may be.
Okay, so then, there's no, right, so, that's only for those people?
Correct, the MBTA will no longer be allowed to park in this area.
They will have to walk in somewhere that they're buying.
To there, okay.
I mean, could they park in the garage? Absolutely, for a fee, but they can't park in the surface parking that's provided exclusively now for the residents and for the office park.
Okay, and so, six is, is being treated the same way?
Exa, yep, yes, six would be for the office park only, no, no more commuters in that lot as well. So, really, the, the MBTA will, will have to accommodate their demand in their lots. The MBTA has, you know, four, four separate lots, and then again, there's some parking in the garages that could utilize commercial parking, but for the most part, it'll be the MBTA's responsibility to accommodate their commuters.
Okay, so, well, then, a lot happens to do with the building with the parking. So, it's, 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 I'm just wondering if that building is already set up to fail for the parking spaces that it's gonna require? So, that's gonna push it, people to other spots, either on-street parking, and now the commuter rail people are already in trouble, 'cause they're, they're used to being able to park in two, five, four, 'cause they do pay to park there now, it's not free.
And again, when, when we did the analysis...
Yeah.
We know how many cars the MBTA needs to have these spaces, because we counted the cars that park there, and it's four nineteen. If you take all the spaces that they have, plus some of the surplus spaces that are in the garage, we're showing a total supply of four-seventy-nine, so there, there'll be sixty additional spaces beyond what the MBTA needs if they, if they were to use all the spaces provided.
And you're figuring, how many cars are you figuring to those residents that are gonna be there? Two cars, one car? 'Cause, 'cause then they're gonna spill into...
The total, the total demand for the residences is two-hundred-and-thirty-five spaces, is the peak demand, and that we provide in, in the two orange lots, as well as ten spaces in the garage itself. So, the chart here, this is the residential, and, and actually, and I think that some of the residential will also be here, as well, when we look at the total, we, we have two-thirty-five, which is what the ITE tells us we need, the industry data.
Okay, and since, and then, are they doing any upgrades to that parking lot, where there's the river going underneath that, or have you guys been before conservation on, on that parking?
If I may, perp, per valid question, but that is actually the site plan.
Oh, that's next one, okay, yeah, I knew what's gonna happen, okay.
We will have Corcoran Group, if this project is approved...
Okay, that's fair, yep, okay.
We'll have an easement to use spaces, and we'll certainly provide further documentation when we get down to that level, but as far as what's being physically done there, I'll have to defer to Mr. Manzo and his team.
All right, go ahead, Joe.
Phil, if you wanna stay at the podium too. My only comment about parking relative to this site, and I mentioned it back on January nineteenth, was that I'm a firm believer that the residence parking for the tenants at the residence at, what's it called?
Walpole Station.
Walpole Station, that they be given the covered parking underneath their apartment building. And I believe that you seem to be concurring with that, and Mr. Bumbrowski was concurring with that, and that the bylaws would seem, would, seem to allow for that. I think it makes a lot more sense to give the residents that covered parking. Then I have comments about the parking at the Manto, Mr. Manto's project, but I'll hold them till later, but as far as parking at the site, at the apartment building, I believe it belongs, should be assigned and reserved for the residents.
Joe, you absolutely summed it up correctly, and I still agree with you. I actually am trying to put something together to present to your board as far as what options are, but right now, I'm still discussing with the zoning enforcement officer and engineering regarding the bylaws as to what potential options we have to make that happen, and still comply to the, to the extent we can to zoning, and if not, maybe asking this board support for a potential variance application, but I haven't gotten enough answers right now to even ask you for help, because I don't know exactly what I'm asking for yet, so...
Would it be a condition of the planning board, if the planning board, other members so, moved, voted that way?
The trouble with conditioning, that you have to park underneath there, it requires a variance from the zoning board, and much like they can't abrogate your responsibilities and powers by conditioning their permit, you can basically say, or I would recommend, the board can do whatever its, its pleasure is, you can, you have in the past said, we want to see X, the Walmart light, I think, is a good example, we want the Walmart, we want the light in, it's the applicant's responsibility to use all diligent efforts to make it happen, recognizing that we still need masti OT and the Board of Selectmen's approval, if they choose not to, then it's a dead issue. Four years later, it finally happened, but again, conditioning something that requires a different board that's outside of your jurisdiction to do something, doesn't really work.
All right, if you wanna give us something, I would certainly entertain it, I don't know how the other members of the board feel about it, and I would hope that they would, you know, see that as an acceptable and appropriate use of parking.
It is my intention to do that, but again, until I get a little bit further down the road with the zoning enforcement officer, et cetera, I don't know what I'm asking for your support for. So, as soon as I do, believe me, I will.
The way we left it last time, did Mr. Bumbrowski indicate that he was gonna put something together too, on parking, or...
I, I believe he has submitted something, but I don't wanna speak for him.
Okay.
When it's their turn, I'll let them answer that.
All right, on parking, I'm all set.
Yeah.
Thank you.
All right, um, kinda hang loose failure right there.
Oh, I can stand up, you see.
Okay, what this really comes down to is, the biggest thing here is parking, and from a board member, this will be affect the town more than any other thing I've done here, 'cause anything up at Route One really doesn't affect it, especially they have to have the right amount of parking. When you look at the plan, and I understand that the T is renting lots or whoever's leasing them, that's, that's fine, but what will happen when those lots are taken away, to park down on the Elm Street one, in the blue, that's a real problem, and it's bad enough, 'cause I just live up the street, during the morning, getting under there, but at night, it's even worse, because when you're coming around on East Street, and you take the right out of the bridge, you can't even see the people coming out of that, and you're gonna have a traffic backup from there back onto Main Street, without a doubt, and if you could, you know, if you, if it was legal to pick off commuters going across the street, I'd be a rich guy, because they just come flying across there, now I get in their cars, and it has nothing to do with you guys, the MBTA's done a, I almost said it, but a poor job, 'cause they don't even have a light there like you should to shine down, and these people just come all around that fence and away they go. So, what you're gonna have is, right now, it's like a, it works nicely, like a spoke around the train, you come in from West Street, you park there, you come in from North Walpole, East Walpole, you park on that side, and if you come from the West Walpole or Medfield, you park on that. Once it's gone, the spoke's gone, and it's, and once it gets filled up from the West Street side, everybody's gonna come down there, but we know that's not gonna happen, we got people parking right now in the municipal lot, and that's gonna continue to happen. People are gonna park in the municipal lot, and the problem the police have right now is, how do you handle that? Matter of fact, I talked to the lieutenant the other night, who was charged up with ticketing people who were over-parking beyond, behind Beetle's Pharmacy along Main Street, the problem over there is hard to identify what is the towns, what isn't. He also found out the next day from his chief, that there were a lot of complaints from people who actually worked there for the whole time, and you can't tell the difference between a commuter and a worker, but the other thing is, it's my opinion, it's a public parking lot, so you can park where you want, and as I continue, I've told people it's gonna come down to here, it's gonna go to the pool, I'd be parking up at the Johnson, I mean, it's for, for the town, full-time cop and probably tow truck, understood, just so that when that goes, but I understand it's not your problem, so, but, the question I have is, what are you going to the ZBA for? You're going for variances on the number of parking spaces, is that correct?
No, not quite. We have four requests in front of the zoning board, we have, are asking for a variance for the building height.
Okay.
We are asking for a variance for the drive aisle width, in one parking area, basically behind the building, to go from twenty-six feet down to twenty-four.
Yeah.
We are asking for a special permit to determine that the number of parking required for the new building is two-hundred-and-thirty-five spaces.
What, okay, then let me understand something.
Mm-hmm.
Very simple, every residence here, downtown, you gotta have two spaces for every apartment or every dwelling.
Correct.
So, then, wouldn't that be a variance?
No, the way the bylaw is written, it is a special permit under the purview of the zoning board.
Okay, so, you're gonna ask for roughly half?
Uh...
It's one-point-two or something like that?
About that, yes.
So, we'll, we'll throw a number, say a hundred-and-ninety-one, we'll call it a hundred-and-eighty. So, the way, if I do my math correctly, is we're gonna be short somewhere in the order of four-hundred-and-fifty spaces in total when we're all done. No, what I'm saying is, add all the lots that now house the T, and add it to that, the net result downtown is four-hundred-and-fifty spaces gone, 'cause there's no guarantee your people in your apartments are only gonna have one car.
That's right, that's what I see.
And the other thing is, my opinion is, you're putting it next to a train station, which makes all the sense of the world, you don't live next to a train station to drive to Norwood for work.
Correct.
So, I mean, I understand the concept, but I don't have an issue with the concept, but to say these people are gonna leave, I, I don't think so, I think it's always been, probably be marketed as that, but whether it is or it isn't, my whole point is, four-hundred-and-fifty odd spaces are now gonzo, between the, being wiped out, because now it's gonna be part of this project, or you're gonna have a shortfall, that's a lot of parking, and what that does to the rest of the town, it just, and if the merchants think it's wonderful, I don't, I mean, the only thing that comes to my mind, it's kinda like Yogi Berra said, no one goes there anymore, 'cause it's too crowded, and I could see that happening, 'cause people will park squirrel in anywhere, I mean, they'll park on Main Street, 'cause no one wants to park there all day, so that's one of my concerns. Now, the other thing that just come up tonight, I didn't realize, are you proposing to combine parking between yours and Manzo's? Shared parking, I should say? 'Cause I thought I heard that, you'd be bouncing back and forth, right?
By two and three, right?
Yeah.
Two and five.
Two and five.
Two and five, I'm sorry, yep, two and five.
Shared parking?
It, it's not considered shared, because we are not taking one space and double-counting it. Shared parking under the bylaw basically says, two businesses exist, and by the way, it prohibits shared parking between business and residence.
No, I understand that.
That's how we get here.
But how are we getting the residents to park over there?
I mean, how are you getting them to tell them that?
Well, if, if you're doing sha, if you're doing shared, it's, it's a business and a residence, correct?
The lot is being utilized by different entities, that is correct. It's not shared in that the same parking space is being counted, for instance, in the day for business and night for resident. The numbers we're saying that are gonna be allocated to Corcoran... The numbers we're saying that are going to be allocated to Corcoran and the numbers we allocate to Manzo, if you add them up, will be the number of spaces that are actually there. Not, business uses it during the day, residents use it at night, and then...
Let me back up. What you're saying is, you've got this many, Corcoran, Manzo has that many, when you mean shared, they may park all over the lot, is that what you're saying?
Yes.
All right, so that, okay. You can't prohibit someone from parking where they want. I, okay, I understand. So you're not doing shared, then, okay.
Mm-hmm.
And I understand, there is a big, I know Mr. Norton, our building official, has an issue regarding what's paid, what's commercial law, and what's not. And I know one thing he mentioned to me a long time ago is, if it's part of the lease, it isn't a commercial, it's just part of the lease. So I don't know if...
That is currently our understanding as well.
Okay, so we're still at that point, okay.
That's why I told Mr. Maraski, I'm trying to figure out what I'm asking for help on to hopefully shift the residential parking underneath the building.
Okay, so, but what I said was, we're going to throw 450 out there, gone. 150 a yard doing, and 100 in the balances, Manzo for his space.
Based on two unit, two parking spaces per unit, there is a lesser number. I would actually ask Sean to get, to talk more about how we determined 235 is the right number as opposed to, I believe it's 394.
We're not the ones going to do it, so, I mean, that's the only board you've got to prove it to.
Yes.
But my, my opinion is, it's been done in this town, and two, Norwood's the same way, and Norwood's a more urban town. They want to, because this is, you know, the 21st century. You go down to South Boston, once upon a time, a three-decker had one car for everybody. Now there's probably two cars for each unit, so you get six. So to retreat backwards, it seems a little bit of, not, not a real good thing to do.
I can just, because I hear the parking ratio from a number of different people. As a long-term owner of this building, who's going to be trying to make sure the apartments are filled, we're building the number of parking spaces that we truly, I mean, you know, I T E, you know, confirms this, but this is the number of parking spaces that we believe we need to support these apartments. I mean, you've mentioned South Boston, we have a building there, apartments. We have way less than one per, per unit there, 0.65. And we've studied other suburban commuter transit-oriented developments, and, you know, come up with comparable ratios to what we're providing here, so. I know it's what the book says, but it's also, you know, what we think we need to support this project.
I understand the way all that goes, but we have a bylaw here, two spaces. If you were out in the woods, we wouldn't care. We care, because we've got a problem now, and this is just going to make it a lot worse. And when you're back in, with Braintree, and I'm walking down Main Street, it's going to be, you know, nice going. That's what I'm looking at. And it's going to affect everybody. This is probably the single biggest project that's going to affect the entire town, because everybody's going to want to come down or something. You know, I can still scoot out to Midfield if it gets too crowded downtown. All of a sudden, instead of being in the center, it's going to be, and I can see that. But this is, this is why I bring up the issues, and like I said, I understand what you want for parking, but you, you have to prove that to the zoning board. Now, I have some other comments from other boards I'll read now. I don't know if they have to do with parking, they don't. Do you want to hold them, Phil?
No, we'd actually like to hear everything.
Okay. From, I'm going to grab the wrong one, sorry. From Landis-Hershey, conservation, November 17th, the conservation has not had an opportunity to view the application yet, because they do not meet until the 24th. Oh, I'm sorry, this, it said no here. Did I miss something, Kate?
One said oh, one said no.
Look at the sticker that says no. Oh, here they are. New, new, new. Okay. From Paul Barry Deputy Fire Chief, dated the 18th of January. Fire Department requests confirmation through an engineer of the prop and turning radiuses throughout the site. Attaches Walpole Fire Department's turning radius. Assume you have that? Or not?
Our engineer, please prepare in that plane, we got the...
Okay, you're not, just asking. And the next one was, the aerial apparatus overhang will need, aerial apparatus overhang will be needed to take in consideration when determining the final location of lighting placement, as well as any other potential obstructions. Okay. From Landis-Hershey, January 26th, conservation opened a hearing for notice of town 95 West Street on the 25th of January. Attaches a copy of commission's letter to the applicant and owner addressing comments and concerns. This is to the John M. Corcoran Company applicant and owner, Michael Manzo, dated the 26th of January. The public hearing for 95 West Street, the Conservation Commission directed the applicant, John M. Corcoran, to provide additional information to meet the requirements of 310 CMR 1058. The supplemental information should include an expanded discussion on 10.584C2 scope of alternatives and address the 10.584D, no significant adverse impacts. The area under consideration for practical alternatives specifically for the purpose of riverfront improvements to the existing conditions shall extend to the original parcel and subdivided parcels. Any adjacent parcels and any other land which is owned by the same owner within the river basin as the proposed property. Specifically, since the proposed project includes use of West Street parking lot for parking for this development, the commission would like the applicant, as well as the owner, to address the potential mitigation to the parking lot to correct, to correct the existing conditions, which includes broken pavements, poor drainage, no stormwater management, sedimentation along the banks of the river, and vegetation along the banks. The commission would also consider the other proposed improvements to the riverfront within the same general location of the proposed project. The applicant should address the other comments brought up at the hearing and provide a revised plan and supplemental information to conservation by February 13th. And your next hearing is on the 20th, so, soon you know all that. From the water and sewer, on the water and sewer, reviewed and discussed all available information regarding the above subject, the applicant should be informed that there are no, that there are water, sewer, inflow, infiltration fees associated with the building project.
Well aware.
Cost more on the builder. The Board of Health at this February 7th meeting voted unanimously that they are pleased to see adequate street lighting was added to the plan. The board also reiterates comments previously made at the November 15th meeting to the planning board, hopes to review an updated plan addressing those concerns regarding an onsite play area and designated area for recycling and trash collection. And that's all I have for any other comments, or new ones. Okay?
Thank you.
Yes?
I have a quick point before you go to the, open up to the public. 192 units. What percentage of these units is inhabited by tenants that you think won't have cars, that buy these, rent these for commuting? Have you, any cold, hard facts?
What percent will have zero cars?
No, yeah. Is there any, any of those tenants you think that won't have vaticans?
Oh, sure. There will be...
What percentage?
Okay.
You, you have buildings elsewhere, in Jamaica Plain?
Yes, in Jamaica Plain?
Yeah, you don't know, what percentage?
Oh, I'm sorry, in our existing buildings. Yeah, in Jamaica Plain, we have, we're renting with people, well, 0.6 of our apartments have cars.
Have cars.
Have one car.
One car, yeah.
0.6 of our apartments in Jamaica Plain, much, much different.
This building is steps away from the train station, and this, that just come across my mind, and I talked to the attorney there, and Mr. Mackey is right, and if you get the, successfully and get in the waivers from, from ZBA, I think it takes a lot of our powers away, the planning board. I think you're...
I disagree. You still have complete jurisdiction over traffic and...
Traffic, we don't...
I mean, John, you got Section 13, everything under there, you still get to rule on.
Yeah, but...
The number, you don't get to pick.
No.
That's true.
That's the big one. Yeah, that's about it, Jack.
I believe the 0.6 is the B R A, City of Boston's requirement, not necessarily yours.
Well, any, any project built in the city is getting approved by the city. The city doesn't publish a requirement, because they're all, you know, they go through a large project review under the B R A, and then go to the...
It's been over since Bermano was in there to reduce the number of parking, so that's why it's shrunk. It hasn't increased, it's gone backwards to encourage people not to have cars.
Well, I'm, as the person who's running that project, I'm watching us lease it up at that number of spaces. I mean, we count, and, and that's, that's what we have. And the same thing with our one in South Boston. We built under the old regs, one per unit, and we are, you know, we ran forever, 60% full.
Boston's discouraging two per unit, or they want to keep it low.
I think they're doing that to, to meet the actual demand for parking from, from the people who are living, living in these buildings.
Well, what I read it was to, to stop the carbon footprint and all that wonderful stuff, and you're in Boston, not need to commute, so they've shrunk it down. But we all know Boston has a parking problem, and they just went triple the fees in Seaport a lot of ways, so it's...
You're correct, Jack.
Yeah, they shrink, I'm not blaming you, but they shrink the number you could provide, and then they jack up what you can't get.
Well, if I wanted to go, if I wanted to build one and a half spaces per unit in Jamaica Plain, I don't think I would have gotten pushback. I, I wouldn't do that, because I don't think we need it, and it would be not the appropriate way to build on the site.
Public transportation is encouraged by the City of Boston.
Of course.
But what you should be doing is catering to the, to the, to the people with, with no vaticans.
The goal here is to attract people who are using the train, who are going to be, you know, using zip cars, and we're going to promote that as, as we can.
Well, that leads me to an obvious question. We're all well aware that Boston's a much different animal than, than the suburbs.
Yes.
Do you manage any properties, or does your company manage any properties in the suburbs where, if you're not getting on a train to go to work, are you stuck in Walpole and, and with nowhere to go? So I know, just considering myself a typical 50-year-old guy, I would not want to live in an apartment, as nice as these will be, if I didn't have a vehicle, and I know my wife is not going to let me have the only vehicle, so, you know, if you're trying, if you're going after, you know, early 30s, single commuters, okay, there's your one car, which could lead you to the 1.2, but to Jack's point, this isn't Jamaica Plain. People are going to want to get up and go, and I can see, I can see some potential issues here with a shortfall of that, of the magnitude that he was talking about.
The, the data that we have from the properties we own and manage in the suburbs, we manage mostly in the suburbs, is that we, we don't have people who have two cars on average per unit. I mean, sure, we're, we're not saying we're going to have 0.6 cars here either, we're saying we're going to have twice as many. So we acknowledge it's not Jamaica Plain or South Boston, it's, it's a, you know, it's a more suburban location, and there's at least, you know, on average, at least one car per apartment, that's what we're saying.
Yeah, and I'm, I'm not challenging, I was just wondering if you had data based on a similar location.
Yeah, we, our, our most comparable project is one in South Weymouth, at the Old Naval Air Station there, that's, has comparable commuter access, but inferior, you know, walk to retail, and we're, we're right around the same bed, per bedroom ratio.
Okay, good. All right, before I open it up, now, I'm going to ask the obvious question. Don't, take it the wrong way, but why don't you want to do two per unit? Just make it easier on yourself?
Well, it's, the site prohibits it.
Does it, or?
Yes, I mean, you can't, you can't go down, you can't go down to the site. So this parking, the parking we're building is, well, you can go up, I already, I mean, we were talking about...
So what it comes down to is, that's why you started couching this whole thing, it comes down to economics. It's not economically feasible for what you want to do to, to get the two spaces, based upon what you had. If you have plenty of land, you're probably more down tomorrow.
Well, if we had plenty of land, and if we thought we could rent these spaces per unit, I mean, if you build parking that you can't rent, that's not economically feasible either.
Did anybody take that? Okay, I hope out the public.
You have to come down.
TV time.
We did, we're not on that project. We did your parking.
Big setup, precinct date. Several, several points. I'd like to see the board stick to the two parking spaces, all right, per, per unit. That's our bylaws, let's stick to them. Number two, I'd like to see all parking for this project on-site, not all around town. Okay? Number three, what happens when it snows out? Where'd all these cars go? That's all I have for now.
Thank you. Anyone else, public have any questions, comments? Okay, I guess we'll see.
Hamilton, precinct five. I, I had asked a question at a pre, pre-meeting, a prior meeting.
Yes.
What about what the D O T is planning for the train station? Any details on that? Because they said that they were putting a fence all the way up to the bridge, all the way up to the bridge there, and that would affect where people want to park. And there's going to be a lot easier places to park in the downtown-type area where we have a major problem now. Now, I know that people are trying to get details from it, and there should be details that they can give us about putting in the gate there, the fencing, and that type of stuff. And it makes some of these parking lots look very unattractive. So I would hope that we'd have some information from the Department of Transportation. And as, as a second point, I was over a Foxborough meeting where they expected the D O T and they didn't show up, and a select woman there released a agreement with the town, with people who own property in Foxborough, with the stadium, and the D O T, where there's a layover facility that's been offered to them and planned with six tracks, each track holding a train of nine cars. And that brings me back to when they were going to go to Framingham, that's an emergency line for Framingham, Stoughton, Mansfield, Providence. So there's probably a big plan for Foxborough, for the Walpole Station, and I'd like to at least have the planning board know what's on the horizon. Thank you.
Well, that was a point, were you able to check that out? Wait. I mean, this is for you guys, too.
Yeah, no, it is, and it's important to us. We've made contact with the MBTA, I'm going to meet with them, it was supposed to be next Friday, it's now the following Friday, the 3rd. So both for us to inform them as to our plans, and for me to get some more information from them as to where they think things are going.
Okay.
But, you know, it's the MBTA and the D O T, so.
Okay, any questions or comment? We're all set, all right. Is there another hearing date?
If I may, if you have comments on the plans that have been presented thus far, engineering-wise or other?
Okay, at this time, I don't.
I have 11 pages of notes. You want to go through it?
We'd like to hear them, if we eventually want those notes into the plan.
I have motions, too. I didn't know you were coming in with another plan, nobody, and I spent a lot of time reading what you have, if you want to.
I just speak to the other man, just to save you the time, the changes are nominal, we can put a summary memo together to help you. It's really some changes on pavement types, I think, to respond to a few comments we got from the Conservation Commission, and to widen the rear driveway. I think those are the two main changes, which in part shrunk the building footprint by a matter of feet. We'll, we'll put a summary memo, it's a fair request.
I don't want to monopolize, but I do have quite a few, but if you want me to go through it, I'll go through it.
Yeah, you go through it, I just, you know, when people say, I work in the business, and a lot of times architects have any, have any plans, I go, it's nothing. And then, you know, a couple hundred grand later...
Are you ready?
Whoops.
Ready?
I am.
Okay. I read everything you submitted, everything to date, every piece of paper, and I have some questions, and I've got some comments, and I have some i's to dot, or I think I have i's to dot and t's to cross on some of the forms that you submitted. And I, hopefully, I think I can add some substance to the discussion, and maybe try to get this moving along with possible motions or ideas. So while I'm going through this, and it's in kind of in a haphazard way, because there was so much information, you've got to have, you're going to have to have a lot of patience with me on my questions and my comments, so treat me with some excessive leniency, if you don't mind. Let's take a look at the application for site plan review first. You indicate in the application that the request for site plan review is to allow for the construction of 70,860 square feet of footprint mixed-use building. So I went to the plan, I see...
So, I went to the plan, I see seventy thousand eight hundred and sixty square feet on the sheet A1, ground floor plan, and it all adds up. However, I see, I also see seventy one thousand five hundred and twenty-five square feet on sheet C2. So, there's a difference of a couple of hundreds, seven, almost seven hundred square feet. I don't know if that makes a difference, but, you know, in terms of maybe the submission of a site plan review fee, I don't know what you've submitted, we haven't seen that with our package, I'm assuming you submitted it to town, to Town Hall. So, the first question is, what is the basis of the site plan review fee? Is it the seventy one thousand five hundred and twenty-five? Is it the seventy thousand eight hundred and sixty? Where are we there? And I have my own little calculation, I don't know if that's the right calculation. Do you know what you submitted for a fee to begin?
Six thousand dollars.
Six thousand?
Yes. I can speak to that. Phil came in, as we established during the other filing that's somewhat associated with the site, the fee schedule leaves a lot to be desired in terms of site plan review. Phil came in, Kate pulled out the fee schedule, and I don't have it in front of me right now, but it dictates, you know, this many to this many square feet, you add it all up and multiply it out. Then, when you get to the larger square footages, the rate changes. So, it's basically a series of math equations. Phil came into the office, Kate pulled out the fee schedule, and the three of us sat there for probably about forty-five minutes with a calculator, trying to figure out what the fee was supposed to be. It shouldn't be that complicated, you shouldn't need three intelligent individuals to figure out the filing fee. But nonetheless, we arrived at one number that was, it seemed off, it was larger than the six thousand, I want to say it was in the vicinity of ten or eleven thousand, and then we went back through all the calculations and realized that we were actually double counting something. I want to say it was ten thousand square feet, but again, I don't have it in front of me, that we realized that we were double counting when you moved up to the different categories of the square footages. So, nonetheless, six thousand was what? Three, what I like to call intelligent individuals came up with for the fee, after doing the equations for forty-five minutes.
One must not be as intelligent, because I came up with ninety five hundred and seventy-six dollars for the seventy one thousand five twenty-five square feet, and ninety five hundred and forty-three dollars for the seventy thousand eight hundred and sixty square feet.
That's what we came up with first. It was in the ballpark of ten thousand, and then we realized that something was being double counted, and we went back and redid it.
Okay. All right, well, at least we're discussing it. Also, on sheet two, while we're talking about numbers, I go by the assessors' online database as my correct number for acreage and square footage. And for this particular lot, the assessors' online database is it's two-point-five-three acres, and on sheet C2, you have existing two-point-five-three-three acres. Then Allen and Major Associates, on their report, they listed at two-point-five-seven acres. So, where are all these numbers coming from? When the team puts together their acreage for their reports, oh, how, you know, why isn't there a consistency here?
Get everybody up here by the end.
Precinct five.
Good evening, my name's Steve Shenard, I'm project manager from Allen and Major. The calculations for the lot area, under existing conditions, is two-point-five-three-three acres. What we're showing is a slight modification to the property line that increases the property on this lot to five, two-point-five-seven-five. There's an, another subdivision to fix the right northwest corner of the lot, so that we have appropriate setbacks. There is another...
The northwest corner being, show us on the board, please.
Sure. Go to the layover plan. Oh, there we go. This corner over here, if you look at the original subdivision plan, this lot line looks a little bit different. We've modified it so that we could get an appropriate setback for the building to the property line here, and I don't know exactly where that stands, but this is the latest plan for the lot right now. So, it's a little bit larger to be able to accommodate that corner in there.
Okay, and that's the...
At one point, it came in and it jogged over, it came up, and it was very close to the building.
And that's the exit to Depot Road?
That is the exit to Depot Road, yes.
And the town owns Depot Road?
No.
Who owns Depot Road?
I believe that is the MBTA.
Okay. And it's not an approved road by the town? It's not accepted?
That I don't know.
I suspect it's actually a driveway.
A driveway.
That's a supposition.
Okay, thank you. Going back to the application, and I just want to bring this up and just point this out, you know, these are crossing, dotting i's and crossing t's, section of my questions. But going back, Mr. Manzo signed the application as the property owner, he dated the application, November 3rd, 1945.
That would be my birthday.
I thought so. I thought that was the case.
My apologies.
So, we can assume that he dated it in 2016.
Yes.
But the zoning official, he also dated his application, when he dated this, as November 11th, 2016, so he's a hard-working town employee because he was here on Veterans' Day, a holiday when Town Hall was closed. So, we doubled the error, probably. Also, on this, we don't have a, was there a design review committee?
Yes.
On this? Okay, it's not indicated as such.
There were multiple, but we no longer refer to it as the DRC, so the form is outdated.
Joe, can I just say something? Mr. Mackey, it would behoove you to talk to Mr. Norton to make sure that he misdated it, because as you know, you can't sign any legal document on a holiday.
I will follow that up.
Thank you. Development impact statement, the second sheet, page two, item number two. The total area of the project is one hundred and twelve thousand one hundred and sixty-three square feet, or two-point-five-seven acres. If you divide two-point-five-seven acres into one hundred and twelve thousand one hundred and sixty-three square feet, you come up with a different number. Not everybody's using forty-three thousand five hundred and sixty square feet for an acre. Hundred and twelve thousand one sixty-three divided by two-point-five-seven is forty-three six hundred and forty-three point nineteen. So, what I'm seeing is, are we going to use the legitimate, universal square footage for an acre?
That's what assessors use, is that?
That's what they, that comes out of the assessors.
It is forty-three thousand five hundred and sixty square feet, but I think what you're looking at is rounding. We take the square footage and divide it by forty-three five sixty to get a rounded, rounded acreage out to three decimal places. It might be that's rounded off, and that's where you're getting the difference of the six square feet.
Okay, the assessors actually round up, and so if they have it at like two-point-five, even if it's a lower, six-four, or something like that, they'll round up to the next number, I think. That's their, I think that's their policy. But I just want to make sure that when we are doing this, that you're not going to run into a problem later on.
I understand.
Okay, thank you. The narrative description of the development impact statement, twenty studios, eighty-three one-bedroom, seventy-nine two-bedroom, ten three-bedroom, one hundred and ninety-two total, two hundred and twenty-nine thousand square feet of residential, so it comes out to an average of eleven hundred and ninety-two square feet per apartment. If you go to your sheet, A04, unit mix plan, the color designation is difficult to understand. What color represents a studio? What color represents a one-bedroom? What color represents a two-bedroom or a three-bedroom? Do you have anything more specific in terms of the color code and the square footage of the different types of apartments? In fact, they all look the same, like they're the same size.
Ron Vestry, Stephen Bradley Architects. I appreciate the question. I thought we had, and I see that it isn't, I thought we had a color code on there. What we do when we do these master plans is, each one of these little rectangles is what we call a key, and two keys would equal a one-bedroom, three keys would equal a two-bedroom, four keys, that's the way it goes. So, if I were to work with the diagram, this being three rectangles is a two-bedroom unit. This being two and two together, those are one-bedroom units.
One or two?
These two together is a one-bedroom unit.
Okay.
The next, the next two together, the same color, is a one-bedroom. So, let's call it the tan color, or however you see that color, those are one-bedroom units. One and a half, so it's one and a half of one of these rectangles is a studio.
Okay. Can you give us something that breaks this down for us?
Oh, yeah, we can easily break this into the actual units themselves.
Per floor? Are they all the same for every floor?
I think the top four floors are the same, this floor's a little bit different in arrangement. So, this is a typical floor all the way through the building, this is that one floor right above the parking level, it's a little bit different.
Okay, all right, so thank you. If you can provide us that, that would be great. I do notice on this development impact statement, there's no seal for Allen and Major Associates, there's no, the stamp is not on this form.
Your stamp. My second stamp. Yeah, I didn't realize it had to be on that.
All right, well, you can, I don't know what the procedure would be to do it ex-post, you know, after the fact, can he just submit a page with a stamp on it, or does it make a difference?
Well, if you take it for what it is right now, it's not official.
Right.
It's informational only, once he stamps it, it's now become official, so I guess it's no different than getting other information later on.
You may want to do that, then.
Yep.
Okay, thank you. Continuing with the development impact statement, have you filed with MEPA yet? And if not, is that coming up? You indicate not yet filed.
We have not, we wouldn't do so until we had been through the town process to make sure the project is settled.
Okay. Okay, now, under the system impact assessment, Roman numeral item five, letter A, water system capacity, where you estimate your water usage at thirty-five thousand six hundred and eighty-five gallons per day, which is thirteen million twenty-five thousand and twenty-five gallons per year, you said at our last meeting that you haven't been to the Sioux and Water Commissioners yet, and Sioux and Water has informed us that, and the chairman read it tonight, that we should inform you about inflow and infiltration fees associated with the building project. But I think there's a more important issue here, and that is, I think you need to meet with the Sioux and Water Commissioners and the superintendent as, sooner rather than later, because on a similar project involving Barbary Homes and Moose Hill, and I'm not sure if you are aware of this, Phil, but Mr. Mattson, in his memo dated July 9th, 2013, has imposed a lot of water restrictions on Barbary, and also in total on the complex. He indicated that the developer shall provide legal documents to restrict water usage in the one hundred and seventy-four apartment complex to thirty thousand five hundred and eighty gallons per day over the prescribed billing period, and the developer shall agree through legal documentation to pay a water usage surcharge for water used or wasted in excess of thirty thousand five hundred and eighty gallons per day. So, I'm not saying anything about water usage, I'm saying that this may be very applicable to you, and it would probably behoove you to go there as quickly as possible, rather than wait until the end and find out that there's something in here that you can't Also, continuing with the development impact statement, item Roman numeral eight, I want to comment about what is written in consistency about the master plan, and that was section thirteen, nine, A4, which you commented on, Phil, in our last, last meeting, and which you wrote about in your statement. The application indicates that the project fits into the recommendation of the Walpole Downtown Action Plan dated August 2015, and the plan, among other recommendations, suggests that more housing options are needed in the downtown area, as well as additional dining, retail, and office uses. It suggests more housing. It doesn't put a number on the housing, but it suggests more housing. And you, Phil, said at our last meeting that to best of your knowledge, I believe this is what you said, the site is not specifically covered under the master plan, and that is very true. It is not, it's very accurate. There's no relevant information about there, but there is relevant information in the master plan and in the update that sort of applies to this whole case, and I just want to bring that out so that we can have a discussion about it, if you want, but I don't think it's going to have a tremendous bearing on site plan. But whereas you've indicated it, and we've talked about it, and it is in your submission, I think it should be brought forward. If you look at the master plan, under key actions to meet the challenges and achieve the vision, number one, revitalize the Walpole Center into a smart growth center with apartments and office space above shops, a new civic center for municipal facilities, improve streetscape, parking, and a new town green. There is nothing in that action item that references the number of apartments that should be considered, and the master plan does indicate that apartments have fewer bedrooms and therefore fewer schoolchildren, and likely to create a tax benefit. The key action item indicating a need for apartments in the downtown area is not totally compatible or in keeping with the Walpole Master Plan Survey, which was designed to provide a snapshot of what the residents' perception was of the conditions and trends of Walpole. So, let me sort of explain that. Twenty-two percent of Wal, in the master plan, twenty-two percent of Walpole houses responded to the survey, the master plan survey. On page twenty, Walpole residents were ambivalent, though leaning toward the negative of our rental apartments, thirty-nine saying no, and forty-four percent saying maybe. On page ten, under findings, residents would like to see residential growth slow down significantly, they tend to be wary of high density in the form of condos and rental apartments. On page eighteen, slightly more than ten percent of the respondents were regular users of commuter rail, forty percent never used it, remained or occasionally used a train. Parking was an issue at the train station in terms of improvements to public transportation. On page eighteen and nineteen, protecting the quality and quantity of groundwater and the quality and quantity of water in streams and ponds ranked one and two respectively in the level of importance given to natural resources. Protection of the town's water supply and the town's streams and ponds is of paramount importance to residents, and they are willing to protect additional open space as a way to protect water. On page seventeen, linked to concerns about rapid development is an increase in traffic congestion that residents are experiencing, and this is a direct quote that was implanted in the master plan. One resident is quoted as saying, and they put this in the master plan, "It's impossible to drive through town in the morning and afternoon ridiculously crowded, Saturday even worse." worse." And on page eighteen, residents felt less strongly, though still positively, about protecting historic resources. So how do we deal with what is in that plan, what the residents say, and what we have to deal with now, given the application? And I think that we can break this down, I think, and I would like to, you know, hear from my fellow board members, by using some town staff and some technical consultants to sort of get through this. And I would really like to see the ball get rolling here, and I think you people, that your team would like to see that happen too. So at a minimum, regarding this procedure, I think we need some outside, the planning board needs some outside consultants. And at a minimum, I think we need some acoustical engineers. As we all know and have discussed already, on January nineteenth, the project's next to the MBTA commuter rail, you've got noise, vibration, which, you know, is going to cause people nuisances and annoyances. You've got twenty inbound trains and eighteen outbound trains going through Walpole daily, and at odd hours, four-eighteen in the morning, five-fifteen in the morning, eleven-twelve at night, and twelve-thirty-one in the morning. Then you add the Foxborough, the possible Foxborough pilot project, and there's another eighteen trips. So noise could have a direct effect on this, and it could bother the people who inhabit the building, I don't know. I don't know enough about, and I don't know if my fellow members know enough, about the construction of a building so close to a train station that we would have to get some type of acoustical engineer in order to figure this out. Now, unless you can provide some type of substantive information about that, and how this building is constructed to, so people's teacups aren't rattling, you know, I would, I would like to hear that when we get to it. But I think at a, at the minimum, you know, in terms of the employment of outside consultants, I think acoustical engineers might be something that we should consider. A second area for which I think we need technical consultant is traffic. Now, I read your entire impact and access, traffic impact and access study, and your traffic study was done in December of two thousand and fifteen, I believe, on a Tuesday and a Wednesday, in the morning and in the afternoon. There was no midday traffic study, no Saturday study. And, you know, the Saturday study, to me, is more important than the midday study. I think as a resident of the town for a long time, I think, I think midday would be superfluous. I think a Saturday study would be appropriate, especially given what that resident said about traffic in the master plan on a Saturday. I'm not as concerned, like I said, about the, about the midday study, but more concerned about the Saturday study. So I'd like to see us enhance the traffic study somehow. We need at least an all-day Saturday study, and to see if it is more appropriate for the apartments also, if you could put back the drawing of the street, the entranceway of the, and the exit of the apartment. I'm not sure whether or not it would be more appropriate if this, if that would be a one-way in and a one-way out, as opposed to two ways, two-way traffic in and out. And maybe we can have some type of consultant look at that, unless you have some type of information that you'd like to share about that. But as far as going into...
Which one are you referring to as one in and one out, Joe?
Well, I, I assume we can go out on Depot Road.
I would not make that assumption.
No?
It's private property, unless the MBTA says we can. We have to put it there for public safety access, and they aren't going to fight that. But as far as actually being able to use their property for ingress and egress, we'd have no current agreement with them.
So are you going to block that off?
Put up a gate.
The site is designed with the idea that that's not used for ingress and egress of the site.
Okay. It didn't show it on the plan, so where it looked like it was open, I assumed that we, that was going to be a used street.
If the MBTA consents to that, then, then it would be open.
Would you, would you follow up on that?
Of course, yeah.
That's part of the meeting in two weeks.
Okay. The thing that kind of got to me on the traffic study as I looked at it, you know, I thought for sure that a recommendation was going to come forward for a traffic light at Elm Street and West Street. I was kind of surprised that that didn't happen. Instead, there was a lot of conversation about a roundabout and a rotary there, which I know, you know, right from the get-go, that that's not a possibility, from, from land, land ownership alone. And obviously, I don't think that your offer to pay seventy-five hundred dollars for a traffic study after permits are granted is something that the planning board or any other town board would consider. But I would like to see us do some, something in terms of getting a technical consultant or hiring a technical, our own technical consultant for traffic. I can't make the total determination on traffic and validate what your study is by myself, I don't think anybody could. We could ask some questions about it, but it would be nice to, I think, have our own consultant. And of course, on the parking aspect of it, you know my position on the parking, and I hope that, you know, you can, that that could go forward. As far as ours, ourselves, the planning board, I think there's could be some internal review. I'd also like to recommend that the planning board send the site, the redevelopment drainage report to Rick Mattson for his detailed scrutiny and for his written comments. He is, we were paying him to do that type of work. He's getting additional money to do that work, and I think that we should utilize him for that, for his expertise. And simultaneously, the applicant's fiscal impact analysis, I think, I don't think that that has been sent to the police, to the, to the various departments, is that correct?
Whatever was included in their supplemental would have went to the various departments.
So they would have gotten...
They would have, yeah. I would assume that Kate would send that out to everybody.
Well, you know, I find it kind of strange that nobody, you know, responded or made comments about the fiscal impact analysis. So I think, I'd like to see that sent back to the police department, the fire department, Sew and Water, and the school department, and stress to those four departments that we would appreciate their comprehensive and thorough assessment of that fiscal impact analysis. If they agree with it, say so. You know, I think that, you know, we shouldn't leave it hanging that, you know, this is, these are our, our findings, and not have anything specific about the reports that they have, have received. So it's sort of like up in the air as to whether or not they even looked at it. And I'd also like the Sew and Water Commissioners to give us their opinion on the availability of water. You know, to come, to have something come back to us about fees and not anything on what everybody else in town is talking about, I think we need to, you know, end that, you know, buzz about whether or not water is available. And if you could coordinate that, I'd appreciate it.
Sure.
As a side comment about the fiscal impact analysis, I thought it was very interesting, and the applicant provided information to make your point, I thought it was well-written. Certainly, two-hundred-and-eighty-seven thousand dollars is better than nineteen thousand dollars in real estate taxes on a yearly basis. I also thought that if we, if the town had passed a residential exemption, when it does its real estate dual tax rate, that it could be a lot more, but I don't see that happening, or the selectmen considering it. I have my own comments to make about your plans, and it has to do with architecture. Section thirteen, twelve, and I think, I think this is an important critique that I want to make early on in the process, and I, and I hope it is given some serious consideration by Corcoran. Section thirteen, twelve, design standards and guidelines for the Central Business District, and I want to just read it for... "In the CBD district, the following architectural standards and guidelines are provided to encourage building and site design that enhance and strengthen downtown Walpole's distinct community character as a traditional New England center with a diverse architectural heritage that evolved over many historical periods. This heritage includes many distinctive brick industrial era mill buildings, as well as a wide array of colonial, Georgian, Greek revival, Victorian, and other architectural styles. Recognizing the importance of consistency in building materials, massing scale and articulation, design elements and motifs representing downtown Walpole's unique architectural heritage should be incorporated into both new construction and the renovation of older buildings. In particular, design for a project should respect the historic buildings and architectural styles of the surrounding neighborhoods and adjacent properties." Okay, now, in terms of the surrounding architecture, let's take a look at what that is. Union Station on West Street, placed on the National Register in April of two thousand and sixteen, originally built in eighteen eighty-three, constructed in the Victorian eclectic style with Richardsonian, Romanesque influences. H.H. Richardson, one of the three American architects who are considered the Trinity of American architecture, and designed other railroad stations. The second one is the Walpole Town Hall, classic revival with Romanesque elements, placed on the National Register in October nineteen eighty-one, built in eighteen eighty. And the third one, and the most important one probably, is the Deacon Willard Lewis House, the historic house built by Horatio Wood in eighteen sixty-three. The house was purchased by Willard Wood in eighteen, in, and then the owner of the, who was the owner of the Kendall Building, is now owned by the town of Walpole, used by the Historic, Historical Society. It was listed on the National Register of Historic Places in nineteen seventy-five. So within, like, short walking distance, and in one case, spitting distance, you have the three most important pieces of architecture in downtown Walpole. You're in a sensitive area, and the three buildings are also in the master plan, as being such. So let's see what you're doing. Right. Okay. I don't see it. You're not, is this in accordance with the bylaws? Is it in accordance with the master plan? Does it embrace Walpole's colonial heritage? Where is my brick pitched roof, my mullions? Where are people, you know, we have people walking around on the streets in the architectural plans, they should be wearing those tricorder hats. You know, it should be a historical-looking, mixed-use building. And I'm not being critical of Steffi and Bradley Architects. As a matter of fact, I've studied your website and applaud the fact that you're a Vista Award winner for the...
In fact, the most in the country.
Yes, and on, and sponsored by the American Society of Healthcare Engineers. The building that you did down at Bay State Medical Center project, along with Suffolk Construction, very nice, very big. You know, you deserve praise, and the adjacent brick parking lot, also very nice. Atreus Senior Living, another brick mill building that you did in Andover, with adjacent cafes and piano bars and whatnot, very lovely, very lovely. But I realize Corcoran's paying the bill here, and...
I agree with that.
But I got to advocate for my town. You know, why can't we have something like, maybe something like this? Does that look familiar to you? It's one of your buildings, that you're building up in Lowell. You know, it's a beautiful building, right next to the historic area in Lowell. So, you know, I think that we need to really think about this in terms of how this fits in to downtown Walpole. I'm not seeing it. I, I love your work, I just think that as I look at this building, you know, I, I don't see the historical aspects of it.
To respond, to respond to all of your comments, what we did, or what I did, in terms of coming up with an idea for this building, is I did a walkabout of what you would call your industrial manufacturing-type mill buildings. I took my cues from that, thinking that adjacent to the railroad versus doing a large colonial structure or a Romanesque structure, and in fact, so it's understood, Mr. Richardson is one of my favorite architects, in fact, that's why I live in the town of Easton, and bought my property in the town of Easton. Some period pieces are not necessarily conducive to a building of this size. We can look at it at the discretion of our client. I am an historicist by tradition, this was a, let's call it a sidebar for me, in terms of what I typically do. So it's not, we're adverse to doing that, but we, what we looked at when we were trying to plan this building is more the industrial nature of some of the buildings in Walpole because of its adjacency to the tracks, to some of the buildings that were preceding, and that's what we took, and in essence, this is my eclectic variation on that, where you have the large, more industrial windows in the building than you would have with, say, a colonial or Victorian or something of a different era. I appreciate the historic aspect. I was following a lot of the guideline when it said to breaking the facade up, the ins and the outs, the bays and the rest. This is more of a contemporary version of that. But again, if, if the town is really looking for something that's different, I'll defer to my client, we can study that and come up with an alternative if that's desired.
No, the, the sheet A-ten. Do you have it, Dan?
Right here.
Okay. I've got all my notes on the sheet, so this is not going to work for me, it's going to be a little difficult. As one architect one time told me, you have to have an architectural surprise when you, I don't know if that, if you buy into that concept. But when I look at this, and I see all the roof lines, you know, I see building, this building here is now the biggest building. And what happens is, and you can correct me on this, but I look at this building, then I look at building O, and I see fifty-one feet, and I look at building S, I see forty-nine feet, and I see building M, and it's forty-eight feet. What I see is sort of like a wraparound, where we're encompassing everything in, and stuff in the middle is smaller, has, is a less roof, less height. So, shouldn't there be, when you do this, have you considered stepping down the construction, stepping down the roof line, to allow the people to get more sunlight, more scenery in the proposed building, in a proposed apartment building?
Well, what we did, if, go to the, um, one of the, keep going. Keep going to, right. What we did in terms of trying to enhance what you would call daylight and the rest is, as you can see, facing, and this direction is east, so the U shape, the wings face towards east, and what we've done is, we've lowered the building on one end in order to capture within the courtyard in those units, the daylight as it's passing through, because you can see where the arrow is up here.
Right.
The sun, basically rises here, and comes around the building, so we opened up this side. This is the only side that really faces north. The majority of the building is either facing east, south, or west. That was done intentionally, respective to not closing this off with additional building.
Are any of Mr. Manzo's building then blocked off from the sun? Uh, blocked off?
Well, if you look at the shadow, do we have the shadow studies on here? The only time that he would be necessarily, this is what we call the spring and fall equinox, and you can see by the shadow at early morning here, it's going the opposite direction. Noontime, it's very little shadow, and in the afternoon, it's barely crossing over. You go to the next shadow study, the only adverse time would actually be in the wintertime, which everybody has that. Summertime is even less, but wintertime, again, the shadows are going up, there's a little bit along here, and then, yes, in the afternoon, say, three PM or so, that would be the normal for almost any building. So, that, again, that's, when we did the study relative to where we were projecting shadows, we purposefully looked at how our building impacted what was around it.
We didn't get this, and you had this information, this is the first time we're seeing it, I guess.
Yes, correct. Correct. I think we were asked by this...
Oh, is it?
Yes, someone had asked us to do this, the shadow study, so we submitted that.
Okay. Um, okay, while we're looking at the architecture, um, I want to take a little look at the construction a little bit. I saw the fire department's comments, and they were concerned about the to, the turning radius. What about sprinklers? Well, where are they in this, I, I am assuming there must be sprinkling, this, this building is going to be sprinkled, and that this building is going to have fire doors. You must have, you know, lengthy corridors in this building where, which are going to require fire doors and automatic closures, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. Um, but they're not shown on the plans?
No, not at this point, we're not at that point.
Okay. Uh, and is there a fire protection engineer assigned to this project?
There will be.
Okay, and you don't know who that is at this point in time?
I, well, I don't know, um, we haven't made a decision on our engineers yet. It, it would be a premature to get engineers involved until we get some type of planning and zoning approval.
Okay. Um, and I'm assuming, is this going to be a smoke-free building?
Yes.
No flammable objects like candles and barbecues on the balconies?
Uh, correct.
And will there be some type of exterior dry type sprinkler on the decks and balconies, regardless of the height of the building?
There's typically a dry head if you have a building above.
Okay. And what about security system, cameras?
We usually do, we haven't designed this, but we have, we would usually do security in, in some of the common areas.
Okay. Does the pool get a lifeguard?
Yes.
And is the gym, uh, always, um, have a attendant available?
No.
Is that gym open to the public, or only open to the residents?
The way it's anticipated is the residents.
And will there be any guards or doormen, especially at night?
Um, to be determined, have no decision on that.
And is this, will there any be any childcare at this building?
No.
And what about pets?
Uh, they will likely be pet, pred-friendly with some breed restrictions.
Okay. Snow removal process? I don't know where you're going to move snow, you, I'm assuming you're going to take it out on a daily, on a storm basis.
Outside like this, you have to, if, if any stuff, not substantial amounts of stuff.
And the trash and recycling areas look very small. Is it also going to be picked up on a daily basis?
Uh, I wouldn't say daily, usually a building like this, maybe twice a week, two, three times a week, it's a compactor in there, so it's, it's not just bulk.
We have, we have a compactor, and then we have this zone in here for any of the, what we call the, the containers that you bring out of the building to be picked up.
Okay. That's all I have for right now, but what do you think about the fact, since you're going to pay the bill, about the fact of us getting consultants, if that's the route that the planning board wants to go?
As far as the noise goes, at least what you seem to be concerned about is the MBTA.
The train.
The train.
Sure.
Absolutely.
Respective to that, and your concerns with that, and, and our offices, whether you know or not, are right under the flight path at Logan Airport. We've done multiple, multiple units of this type. There are design cues that we take, we've had acoustic consultants, it's a matter of how you treat your windows, your wall construction, that's part of the norm that we would go through when we're building up against a railroad station.
It looked to me, and I, I was going to check into this a little bit more, but had, had not done it yet, but it looked to me that there was, that the construction material was not any different than the construction material used at other sites. That's why I brought this up, okay?
Yeah, you, you would typically, again, we haven't gotten to that point, but you would typically, your windows would be on...
Double.
On these type of locations...
Right.
Where the sound's going to emanate the most, you would do a more acoustic-oriented window.
Okay.
You would probably do a little bit denser insulation, because it's really mass that makes the difference when it comes to acoustics. Um, we have done what we call resilient channel construction at the same time. We would have a consultant, as we would bring on, as, because what I don't need is my client irritated at me because we underdesigned acoustically. We would work with them as to what is the best solution, but we do, again, as I said, from experience, we have basic rules that we use when we're designing up against any kind of commuter rail, or rails, or highway, or things like that.
And the positioning of balconies, did that enter into the acoustical aspect of this?
Not really, because the balconies are more driven by the unit configuration, and where we put the units, and then how the balconies fell out of that.
Okay. Um, the, that reminded me of something, the landscaping plan, it said, it said on the, it was preliminary, and it was, when would that be finalized, do you know?
Well, it's preliminary in that it hasn't, uh, doesn't have every, every single plant tagged, I don't think.
Okay. On some of the drawings, it looked like you were planting some big trees right in the grass, in the, between the sidewalk and the, uh, strip there. Um, I'm not a big proponent of that, because usually the tree roots usually win the battle against the concrete, and, um, if you could push those trees back, oh, towards the building, if that's what you want to, if you want trees there, and I also looked at some of the stock that you were proposing, and some of those trees, um, get very large. I don't know if you want to, if that's something that needs to be reconsidered. Um, and also, there's no lawn there, right? It's all shrubbery and, um...
We don't have the landscape plan loaded on here, unfortunately, but, uh, out, out front of the building you're talking about?
Yes, and the side.
Yeah, correct, there's no, there's no actual true lawns.
Okay, no grass to cut, no grass to water, is more of my concern.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Um, anyone from the public have any questions, comments?
Does anyone else from the board have comments?
I have one, but...
Hi.
It's, it's none of your deal, Phil, but...
Fair enough.
When he said no smoking, right, smoke-free?
Yes.
I gotta ask you, what do you guys do about weed now in your units?
That's a question we have, uh...
Well, you gotta ask a question, I mean, really, because...
No, we have, we have a group looking at it, in our management company, we, we have lease attendants that have, uh, no, no smoking on there, but it now needs to be addressed.
Yeah, because people consider smoking cigarettes or cigars, and you get cancer from that, but if it's weed, you don't, but, you know, that's just as bad as far as...
No, we're, we're, we're going to have to address it, yeah. It's important to keep the environment, indoor environmental air quality.
I don't know, so, if you get, if, if you're weed-free, then your clients go from their thirties to probably my age and above, right?
You never know.
And if you're not weed-free, I'm going to open up a little store in there.
You'll be the first to enter.
Yes. Munchy madness. Um, okay, Phil, I think we'll continue.
Yeah.
When's our next date? Because I know we're good till thirty-first of March, correct?
Yeah.
Can't be next time, because we just got the plans, so, after converse there, what, what do we got?
What's your first available?
Yeah, March sixteenth.
Sounds good to us.
Okay. We got nothing else going there, other than...
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, okay. All right. We'll continue this public hearing on seven-thirty on March sixteenth.
Seven-thirty-five.
Seven-thirty, okay, seven-thirty-five. Walt's at seven-thirty? Okay. All right. Okay.
Thank you very much.
I was going to ask...
I bet you're all set.
We have, we have, we have...
Hmm?
We have lots of...
Um, why did you go around, why, it's okay. Why can't I do, what did you do?
It's broken.
Yeah.
Yeah, I guess what else would I say? I'm trying to say, I've got a seat.
Well, no, you can ask.
Yeah, I still don't know why, why you getting this variant, why?
I gotta pee again.
Are you on your mind to get another chair?
I forgot to ask you.
What?
Do you have any, any comments?
This name's Stu, speak up.
The parking.
Okay.
I got this ass. Let's just change that. It's not just the smell. These are the smaller ones, too. It's been a changer.
That's yours, I'm sorry.
All right, with the hour being after seven-thirty-one, well after, we'll open, uh, continue public hearing. Uh, special permit request to, to Elm Street Walpole Station, that being said, we'll open it up again.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. For the record, Paul Haverty, Blatman, Bobrovsky, and Haverty, representing the applicant. Uh, with me tonight is Mike Manzo and the engineer David Mackwell. My understanding from Attorney Bobrovsky, who was unfortunately unable to attend tonight, so I'm here in his place. Um, at the last hearing, there was a lengthy discussion with regard to parking lots two, three, and five, um, and as to whether or not that those needed, or could be required to be upgraded as part of this hearing process. Um, my understanding is that we were expecting Town Council to weigh in on this matter, um, and I don't believe that it has occurred yet. So, what I'd really like to accomplish tonight is to figure out how we can get that process moving, so that we can get a definitive answer on that question.
Okay. Well, what was said, at the last meeting, it was very clear that everything comes to the board, and it was very watch-understood, and you watched again on TV a couple of times, that he, Mr. Bobrovsky's supposed to send us a letter, we're the board, we review it in the public session, and then we would send it, or we'll send it off to Town Council. That's the process, and that's the way we have to do it. Anything less than that, going directly as it was tried through via email, is circumventing the open meeting laws, so that's why everything comes here, because we can't have, uh, discussions outside this, between two attorneys, where it's, where it's a public hearing, so that's how it always, always goes here.
Well, certainly, the board is within its rights to run its meeting however it sees fit. Um, I've, you know, been doing these sort of public hearings for over fifteen years now. Um, it happens very, very frequently. It is not a violation of the open meeting law for two attorneys, one for the board and one for the applicant, to have discussions outside of the public meeting. It would certainly be a violation of the open meeting law if more than one member of the board were participating in deliberations outside of a public meeting, that's not what we are requesting. Be that as it may, i- if, if the board's pleasure is to, um, refer this themselves to Town Council, um, after having seen the letter, and I did review the tape from the previous hearing, and it seemed to me that the board was actually requesting Attorney Bobrovsky to notify Town Council, so that was certainly the impression that Attorney Bobrovsky had, that was the impression that I had from reviewing the tape. However, it has been sent, um, this board has seen a copy of the letter, so if the board wants to move forward now and refer it to Town Council, we're happy to proceed in that matter as well.
Well, for a procedural standpoint, we get, in hearing night, we get to see it, that's when we vote to send it to Town Council. It's always been a policy of this board, because it's not only for the board, but it's also to keep the, uh, control of the legal budget. We always have to go down the hall and get permission, or at least notify them whether we can go or not, because, you know, we're not going to have the bill racked up, and people want to keep track of it, someone's responsible, we're not responsible for the legal budget, uh, Town Administration is like, we're not, so they like to have some controls over it. So, until we vote to say, yes, this should go, and no, it shouldn't, that's why we can't do it on the outside of this hearing, that's all.
And, and I certainly appreciate that, I mean, I, I understand the board wanting to keep control of the process, um, but we are here now.
Yep.
Um, it has been sent to Town Council, I don't believe Town Council has taken any action, has done anything on it, so the bill has not begun running.
It's also been sent to the town.
Yes, and I think there's been discussions with the Town Administrator as to whether or not Town Council would be authorized, but again, you know, you have your process and...
Let me just caution you, this is a planning board elected, Town Administration has nothing to do with this board and how we conduct business, that's all.
Uh, understood.
Just, I'm sorry, just to clarify, we did send a letter both to the Town Council as a result of the meeting, and then we sent a letter to the board under either registered or certified mail...
Believe it was certified.
Okay.
And, Mr. Chairman, my point in referencing... And Mr. Chairman, my point in referencing Town Administrator was simply with regard to authorization for Town Council to act. That's the only purpose of my mentioning that.
Okay, well, of course, the other thing in here is we need a chance to read people here, because it doesn't necessarily mean what's in here represents everything 100%. And we actually want to have our say if there's something missing. That's why it has to be done here. And ask, I know I'll take a look at it, and Liz, if you take a look at it, just to see if there's anything missing here that the all sides are giving to Town Council. So, if they've asked, I'll make a motion to allow this to go to Town Council. And for Liz, and anybody else has any comments, get back within a week to Liz what needs to go on from us. If you're all set, just tell her. If they're not, okay, have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, stand, so...
Thank you. As I said, we do have our engineer here, if the board has any additional questions. Obviously, we just sat through the prior hearing with Corcoran, heard a lot of the questions that were asked, and if you have any that you want to direct towards us, we're certainly happy to address them.
Okay, I'll read all the new stuff we have. We see it, it's from... Okay, from, I'm sorry, the deputy fire chief. And it said the fire department requests confirmation through an engineer of the proper turning radius throughout the site. Attaches our radius documentation. Believe it's the same one was read to Corcoran. And also, aerial apparatus overhang will need to be taken into consideration when determining final location of lighting placement, as well as obstructions. So, that is similar. From the Board of, I'm sorry, Sew and Water Commissioners, dated January 26th. They have reviewed, discussed all available information regarding the above subject. The applicant should be informed that there are water, sewer, and infiltration fees associated with this building project. Okay. I think, I don't know. It's your deal with Sew and Water. The Board of Health, dated February 8th. It's regular meeting of February 7th. They voted unanimously with their only concern of the reduction of parking, whether it will be provided, whether adequate parking will be provided. And we have January 13th from Maggie Walker. Did we read this one yet before? Last time we met was...
That's the way we responded to her comments.
Okay. Oh, okay, is that the one from Kelly Engineering, the comments? You've responded to hers?
We have.
Okay, and you will be meeting with her again, I assume?
We saw her in the hallway tonight, she didn't get a chance to read it. She didn't send a letter back, because most of the questions at this point have not really been engineering-related. It was more of similar questions that were discussed at the last hearing in digesting the parking information and the previous current.
So, rather than reading the new comments that you've addressed since that time, and you're meeting with her, you're still gonna have to work them out, correct?
We responded to them, and we look forward to working with the board and...
Okay, so... All right, but my point is, it would be a waste of time to read them from your end and her end, because you still gotta do, yeah, I know. From... Okay, we got a couple in here. Let's see. January 26th, to the Planning Board from Landis Hershey Conservation Agent. The conservation discussed the application of reference. Project parking lots 2 and 5 located off West Street, and parking lot 6 off Elm Street, as shown in Plan Sheet 1 and 2, are located within the jurisdiction of Wetlands Protection Bylaw, the Stormwater and Erosion Control Bylaw, and the Massachusetts Wetlands Act. The current condition of the parking lot includes unmanaged stormwater discharge, broken pavement, alteration of vegetation, sedimentation of the riverfront and wetlands. The conditions are not in compliance with Walpea Wetlands Protection Bylaw, Stormwater Management and Erosion Control Bylaw, or the Mass Wetlands Protection Act. Parking lot should be improved to meet the DEB stormwater standards to the maximum extent practicable. Practicable, I'm sorry. The conservation issued a notice of noncompliance to the owners of the West Street Lot on June 14th, 2013, addressing the conditions of the lot and directing the owner to make improvements to concur with, to correct, I'm sorry, the alteration to the resource area. These issues have not been addressed. In addition, as my understanding, the South Street Superfond site cleanup by the EPA may affect the use or the requirement to improvements to one or more of these parking lots. If so, in the end result, after the area is used by EPA, this should include parking lots in compliance with, to the maximum extent practical, with DE stormwater standards, and with it... Just stopped, sorry. We have something here that noncompliance, one dated June 13th, to the Building Site Manager, 100 Elm Street. The conservation recently observed alterations to the wetland resource areas at the West Street Parking Lot, assesses map 33359. The parking lot is located adjacent to the Deposit River, within 100 feet of the boarding vegetated wetlands. On the Mass Protection Act and the Walpea Wetlands Resource Bylaw, activity within 100 feet of the boarding vegetated wetlands and 200 feet from the boundary of the river is jurisdictional under the ConCom's jurisdiction. In addition, sedimentation to the miserable waterways jurisdictional under the Stormwater Erosion and Control Bylaw. The actual photos along the edges of the parking lot, where sand and broken pavement have been pushed beyond the earthen beam, and the vegetation has been broken and damaged. The following steps shall be taken by July 14th to prevent further damage to the vegetated wetlands along the edge of the parking lot, and to prevent sands, pavement, and other debris cementing the river and existing vegetated riverfront. A long-term plan to address the stormwater discharge and repair of parking lot should be developed by September 15th, 2013. Pull out of the way, I'll pull and take out, I'm sorry, pull out and take away to appropriate facilities the sand and pieces of blacktop deposit along the berm within the parking lot. Repair, replant damaged curbs, I mean damaged shrubs, provides some type of barrier to prevent snow from being plowed or deposited along the berm and bank of the Deposit River, follow DEP snow storage guidelines, and develop a long-term maintenance. It appears based on the assesses record that the parking lot is located, that a parking lot located in Elm Street is also owned by TMZ, and this, if this is correct, then the management plan is needed for that parking lot as well. So, that was back in 2013. What else we got here? From Board Appeals. Part review of the zoning Board of Appeals files in regard to Manzo property located Elm Street and West Street. Appears that in addition to the special permit modification request before the ZBA, there was a special permit in 2000 by the ZBA case 4-00 for the property identified as 55 West Street, and shown as assesses map 3321. Please note the following. Request to modify the 2000 special permit case number 400 by allowing 47 spaces for the fee, modifying the number of spaces from 534 to 261, and substituting the new plan for the 1999 plan of record. This request is currently pending before the ZBA, and the request identifies the land as follows. 100 Elm Street, 125 West Street, Poselon West, Poselon Elm, and lists the assesses 33359, 3315, 3321, and 25-276. The special permit issued in case number 4 in 2000, and the special permit identifies the land as follows, is 55 West Street, lots 3321. And they've included that, so that's all they have, the special permits, and, let's see. From, that's the same one we had before, from Landis. Okay. From the license clerk, dated the 14th of February. I have attached the current license in the corner of the license. You will find the fee that was paid, $287 for lots 5, limited to 41 vehicles. I've also attached the Board of Selectmen's meeting minutes from February 5th, 2013, which state they agreed to abide by the existing site plan, will not make changes to the current license. Let me know. So, what we have here is... What they're saying is there's only 41 spaces being paid for, I'm sorry, 47, and that's for the upper lot that was done in 2000. So, it appears that the one on Elm Street and the other one across West Street don't even have permits or anything there. There's nothing.
We can certainly look into that, Mr. Chairman. I don't believe that is accurate.
Well, I've asked them to go back to verify, because we want to make sure we get the right number of spaces, you know.
Certainly.
Don't want to move it, and there's nothing in the history that tells us that Elm Street has any approvals other than 2000, which was on top of the hill, which I remember I was here for that, but nothing for the commercial lots, okay?
Which lot, we refer to lot 6?
Whichever the one, the dirt one, and the one across on Deposit. So, right now...
And I've reviewed the tape from the last meeting and saw that discussion. We are, of course, in front of this board right now, seeking site plan approval for that. We're not arguing that that particular lot is grandfathered, so this board certainly can...
Well, what we have right now is the Elm Street Lot just appeared. It was owned by Kendall's till 88, and it was just a vacant lot, because everybody parked there. And now, all of a sudden, it appears it's a paid lot.
And yet again, I believe my client stated at the last hearing that it was already operating as such when he took over the property. I don't know whether or not proper approvals were granted or not, but we are, again, here now seeking site plan approval for it. If we need to seek other approvals as part of this process, we can certainly do that as well.
Since the Elm Street Lot has no record of anything going back, because Kendall's wouldn't have filed for a commercial permit, because, you know, that was their building, and Historic Realty, I don't think ever did much with it. I don't know how it developed, but right now, you have a parking lot that exists that just one day became a paid parking lot. In the, you know, next to the wetlands, dirt, and everything else. So, that's, to be part of the site plan, that thing would have to go through a whole process itself. And I don't believe you have that on the plans now.
What process would that need to, I mean, isn't site plan the exact process that would need to go through to...
You'd have to build it like a, you have to build it to a parking lot today's standards.
For that lot 6, we're not arguing otherwise.
So, you don't have anything here for that, though, that's been submitted?
Okay, so you would like to see a revised plan showing that lot up to today's standards?
Yeah, it's gonna have, yeah, if this whole project goes through, you're gonna have to build that up to the standards, and the one across on West Street to the standards, too. The other thing is, you kind of got an issue, I think, with the selectmen only paying for 47 out of, I don't know, 150 or whatever spaces?
Right, and again, will address that situation, you know, in the appropriate circumstances?
So, you know, that's, that's the, those are the two big issues. I understand what you want to do, until those get corrected. And so, that's where we are, from what I read for comments.
Well, we do get permits every year for the lots. So, I've seen, I don't have, I do know we get, we pay a fee every year for the, where they quote lots, plural. We have submitted lot number 6, which is, we call it the gravel lot as part of this permit. But I think we really want to get some discussion going on this whole legal issue of grandfathering. And we're just looking for the right person to come that would should be Town Council, and I think you look pretty good.
Grandfathering, what would be getting grandfathered, that lot?
The layout of the lot, the design of the lot, to the extent that it's not lot 6. We're talking about lots 2, 3, and 5 that already exist, are already there.
That's a whole, okay.
And that we are not proposing to make any physical changes to.
All right, lots, we'll call it the dirt lot, I forget which is.
I believe it's lot 6.
That's different, okay, what you wanted, that's where we're going on all the grandfathering, because the discussion was zipping out onto West Street. That's where we started there. I don't know if you, you probably weren't here for that.
I wasn't here for that, I did review.
You both parked there right now, it's just like when you parked in the old mill. Everybody parked right along the edge of the street and went out. It's not like today encompassed by a curve.
So, my understanding from reviewing the tape from the last hearing was that there was some questions with regards to lots 2, 3, and 5, and whether or not they needed to be brought up to current standards.
Well, you have something from the ConCom that says that you have to.
Well, so the Conservation Commission is going to be an entirely separate issue. We will have to obtain an order of conditions or superseding order of conditions. Whatever is necessary to make sure that it complies with the Wetlands Protection Act and with your local bylaw. Certainly is going to have to be done.
Whatever you develop from that.
But that is, and as it was stated earlier, it's to the maximum extent practicable. So, it may not be full compliance with current standards for a parking lot which has already existed, and I presume existed before those standards were in place. So, I mean, those are separate, but the issue that we were discussing, and we're talking about needing the input from Town Council, has to do with whether or not lots 2, 3, and 5 have to be brought up to current zoning bylaw standards. And that's what we're saying, there is the grandfathering issue. That irrespective of whether or not there is a modification or a new site plan approval for the overall property, there's no physical alteration being done to those particular lots. Therefore, they need to be brought up to current standards.
Well, the issue you're dealing with is total lot count, correct? And you've included the Elm Street Lot as part of it. So, right now, that, we don't know whether the 95 will ever make it, will it be 95, 90? So, we really can't do a final count until that's in.
You mean until the Board of Appeals has acted?
No, 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 until it's designed and submitted to us, and you're gonna file the conservation.
I see what you're saying, yes, so until we, until you figure out what's going on with lot 6?
Yeah, you've got to make lot 6 come up to standards. So, to entertain a lot count at this time is a little premature until that's found, whether you can, exactly how many you can do, and so on.
And that's a fair enough point.
Okay.
But that doesn't go to the question of presuming we're satisfying you with regard to that, in regard to the lot count. Are you going to be looking for us to make upgrades to lots 2, 3, and 5, despite the fact that there's no physical changes being made?
Yeah, I understand, that's why we'll send it to Town Council. No, no, it's, yeah, I'm not bringing the two together. Ones separate, and the other ones, yeah, we'll get that sent off to Council. All right?
Anything else?
I think we're only dealing with parking. I don't know, I'll be honest, I don't know what you're gonna do with water and sewer. They end up getting their money somehow, but...
Tends to be the case.
So... 20, yeah, we go to 24th. Oh, I'm sorry, John. Go ahead.
Do you have a copy of the ConCom?
David, do you have a copy of the ConCom?
I do, I read it.
Oh, you read it, that's fine, yeah. No, I'm... Did you send a letter to the Planning Board for Town Council to review? I mean, and that, Jack, did we get a letter from the...
Yeah, they gave it to us. They sent it originally to Alana, and she didn't answer, because it's supposed to go to...
I didn't see that letter, you know.
Well, let me ask Kate, did it go out in our pack, or did it make it?
I don't, if you look at the date, I think it just came in.
Okay, we'll get it to you, John, as a matter of when the dates were.
And does it address parking lot 2, 3, and 5? Does it, you have to bring it up to the current standard by law?
I only saw it came in, I didn't read the whole thing.
So, we have to see that, we have to, that letter has to be worded, to include the gravel, the gravel area, lot 6.
Yeah, that was in my comments from last time, too, because for site plan, you should require that.
Yeah, cable.
They should have to upgrade everything and put in the drainage and stripe it.
We have to run this by Town Council.
Yes.
Oh, yeah, that's all part of the memo, yes.
That's fine, that's my...
So, Liz is gonna review it, and what they've said, and what is missing, if anything, or whatever. If you have any comments you want to go along to any of us, get it to Liz for next week, so she can send it to Alana next week.
Yeah, I just want to include lot 6.
Okay, lot, so, sorry, 2, 5, and 6.
2, 3, and 5, and 6.
Yeah, we'll get that off, yeah, next week, I'm not at the wedding. Won't take it that long, believe it.
That will determine...
It's hard if someone sends it to us.
Mr. Chairman, are there any other issues that we need to refer to Town Council, or...
Those, that's it for now.
Okay, good. I didn't, yeah, I wanted to make sure if we've got anything else, we get it all out at once, and as efficient as possible.
The table, it's like, I think you'd be right, a big check or something, or something thereabouts, but... So... 25...
16, I think?
Yeah.
7:40.
Let me ask. Should they go before Corcoran? Because you guys are kind of keying the whole thing. We'll put you 7:34, one minute before them, so we don't have to keep going back and forth. And Phil can be last. back and forth, and Phil can be last.
Okay.
So, that'll be on the sixteenth?
Yes.
Thank you.
And we don't go late that night, because everybody'd be up late the next day.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Okay, we got a couple more, yeah, we got a couple more things we can... Freeze hand, freeze out here, that need to get taken care of, uh... Did you watch? Okay, Kate, whatever you've got.
Can I have all that first?
Okay. Want the plans back, good?
I'm sure we can go across this way.
It's fine, um... It's Elm Street.
What is it?
That's just endorse the South Street.
Oh, Shields and something, okay.
Is that all that's left?
No, we got...
Need me for anything?
Yes.
Yeah, you need me to watch you put your junk in.
Yes, 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 we, we have a bunch of questions for you.
One for business part.
Oh, no, we got the surety there, lady.
Do you want to do that first?
Yeah, can you do that first?
No, 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 can we take a vote on that?
Here.
Is it right this time?
Which one is that?
This is from Marilyn.
Oh, that's just say, Marilyn just wants you to know that now she has that check hanging in the low.
So, what are we supposed, all right, the town's in possession for fifteen years, this account was set up in debit savings, town walled this past November, this angle's asked me to close the denim account, due to the fact the interest rate was low, close the account, and they're holding on to money since November. Well, she still has the check?
Yeah.
Yeah, can, if you could take a...
She wants to deposit it in the...
Well, to allow her to deposit it, and then whatever they figure out for the surety with that.
So, while, while she's looking for us to vote to say she can put it in another bank?
Yeah, because right now she has a physical check in her possession, and...
She wants to put it in the contractor account.
Okay.
At Century Bank.
Oh, that's all it is? I got a lot more questions, hold on. Okay, I make a motion to allow Marilyn to move the money, has she, she's fit to, was it Rockland?
No, Century Bank.
Oh, to Century.
To Century Bank? I thought it was to Rockland.
No, she says, "I'm familiar with this type of agreement, and would like the board to allow me to deposit the money into the contractor account with Century Bank."
Okay, that's a short two-wins, so that's fine.
Second on that?
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, okay. That's, that's her gig. What else we got, honestly, Liz? Oh, comments, Lizzy. House lot number way, Elm Press Circle, well, make sure she gets them all done, East Street, zoning board, Lincoln Road, what's going on there?
Uh, Home for Little Wanders, they have an old decision, and they want to increase the number of beds from eight to twelve. There's a special condition in the old decision that says, "No more than eight beds."
Ooh, that'll be a big night. You gonna be there that night?
Possibly.
Yeah, all right.
I, 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 I keep the eight beds.
Uh, ten thirty-four, East Street, we know that's Finnegan's, and Oak Street, what's, is that anything, CBA?
That's that wall.
No, that's, that's the one, oh, no, that was Stone Street.
The wall, remember the guy that the kids are sledding, and...
Oh, yeah, and...
None of the doing us.
Hit the wall, no.
All right. All right, and upcoming meetings, yeah, we know about those, all right.
Northridge Farm Bond Reduction.
Northridge Farm Bond Extension, right. He wanted...
Right.
Okay.
How hockey?
Is it, is it me?
Same place.
We request a bond extension, he doesn't tell us the when, though.
What?
This is when he re-upped the bond, but he had to give us an extension, because it was kind of, he should have told us when he wants the bond extended to.
Like, it's typically two years.
Well, they, no, if, if they think they're gonna get on the town meeting, they're usually gonna go a year, but he doesn't tell us. Well, what do you want to do, a year?
Give him a year.
Yeah, yeah, he's almost done, all right. Make a motion to extend his bond up for one year from his, his date of expiration.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
I guess they might teach that at Georgetown.
Um, and the...
Dave Wakefield, what text is it?
Well, Wakey? He didn't go to work.
Fees?
Look at your pink foot.
Fees?
Oh, fees?
We should put that on the next time, and we can fix the schedule.
No, it's not for fixing the schedule, it's for telling the town administrator that, remember this?
Yeah, what did you want to do with this show? I know it's on here.
It's a draft.
What is it?
Oh, you want to send that?
Correspondence, a draft memo of, um, fees.
Well, you want to read it, and everybody do a little board?
Well, yeah, it's, uh, last time when we were here, I think it was the January nineteenth meeting, Mr. Borowski had indicated that, you know, he had negotiated, I guess, a fee with the town administrator and town council, and, so, what I have here is a draft memo, which basically says that, and I'll read it, this memo is directed to the town administrator. This memo is to let you know how you, town council, and applicants with their representatives should handle situations regarding filing fees in the future. At our Thursday, January nineteenth, two thousand seventeen, planning board meeting, we discussed with attorney Mark Borowski why town council and you accepted on behalf of the planning board a check in the amount of a thousand dollars as the filing fee for TMC's application to modify site plan approval. Needless to say, if Mr. Borowski's explanation is accurate, we believe you and town council exceeded your authorities and violated Walpole zoning bylaws, section thirteen, site plan review, item thirteen, site plan review fee, fees, as well as section thirteen, site plan review, item seven B, submittal and review procedures. As you are well aware, the zoning bylaws requires applicants to submit copies of their plans and review fees directly to the planning board. The zoning bylaws are the rules and regulations made by town meeting. In the future, if applicants contact you complaining about their filing fees, please direct them to the planning board where their issue will be resolved. Thank you for your anticipated cooperation. That comes under our review, Jack, doesn't it?
Yeah, that's honest, you want my volus of bar?
Yes, yeah.
Okay, make a motion to vote Joe's, you have a second?
And to allow the chairman to sign the memo.
No, it says, okay, but it says the board, yeah. Okay, I have a second, I'll second it, in discussion?
Did you make a motion?
No.
John did.
John did, John did, okay. All right, gets quicker at this time, all of a favor?
Aye.
No discussions?
Are we, do we have this zoning article, is this gone now?
Gone.
The proposed zoning article twenty, for the fall...
For the AQB?
Yes.
Gone.
Not by much, but it's gone.
So, I can rip this up. What, what happened there?
They pulled it.
Yeah, the selectman pulled it, Pulte came in and wanted to buy woodworkers and put two hundred and fifty-eight qualified units on eleven acres.
Yeah.
Or buy them in a forty B, they tried that in up and, too.
So, you have...
All right.
Southside to sign, you have Barakaya Lane.
We don't have to sign that, though.
What?
All we're gonna do is, Barakaya, we vote the waiver...
Right.
And the release.
And final bond release.
So, I'll make a mo, and Barakaya is private?
It's the one off of Lafayette.
Okay, make a motion to waive the bound at Barakaya Lane and the final bond release.
Second.
It was second, okay, you know what that is?
No.
It's Wakefield's property, that's, if you come down Lafayette, he did a little subdivision, but he kept it private, so, because it's private, we don't do residence hearings, but we have to have it bonded, so, it's probably a bound in the driveway or something, so, is it second on that? Okay, all of a favor?
Aye.
All abstain, and, we can't do the A and R, because we don't have the right plan on this side.
Well, do you want, I have the A and R.
But is it the right date?
No.
Well, then we can't, we can't do it, he'll have to correct that date. Uh, okay, now, last thing we're gonna do is sign, right?
Yep.
Okay, make a motion, after the appeal period's done, to endorse Southside Naposet LLC off of South Street.
Second.
All of a favor?
Aye.
All abstain.
Did we do that, which farm?
Yes, yeah, that's where I made the comment about...
Uh, Georgetown.
Northridge Shield.
Yeah.
Yeah. There's a lot going down, down Washington, four of them, six or four of the, and then they come up, rocks, and they took it.
I don't need this, not anymore.
Yeah, yeah.
It's like at a certain time, they just shut off automatic.
Oh, my God.
It's a lot better than it used to be in the old days.
It was, it was just, you'd be freezing.
Yeah, sure. Initial of inside field.
Okay, you know what you should get, is a, what do you call it, a stamp for all of us, that just, you could do.
I'll be here, okay?
Yeah, you can authorize it, right? You don't have to all be here, and you stamps it, though.
It's not your signatures, I think you should, you should never have anything stamped.
Well, it's like your checks, there's...
It's like auto pen.
What?
You have a stamp for your checks.
Yeah, well, yeah, what do you think, they sign it? Do you think Trump signs everybody's check?
No, they got auto pen, it just goes, that's true.
Well, it might, my daughter, she has her own stamp.
No, I'm talking about your own check, fuck, I thought you were saying you had a stamp for.
My check, I have, my check...
People still use checkbooks?
Seriously?
Yeah.
They do.
They do, too.
Really?
See, that the grocery store still do, yeah.
I don't use it a lot.
Yeah, I pay my dues for the down card, and we take, a lot of small places I can take that.
Yeah, yeah.
Credit card.
Yeah.
Of course, there's always the other thing.
Cash.
You have to, you have to see anybody refuse that.
Cash?
The day will come.
They do, because if you're afraid of people, whatever, doing stuff with the cash.
Well, if they get rid of cash altogether, all the drug guys will be gone, can't even make any money.
The little guys wouldn't make any money either.
All the guys working under the table. Wouldn't make a damn penny at the Italian American Club. Am I still on TV?
Yes.
Make a motion to a chairman, can let the board be to go home.
Send cash to the old country in shoeboxes.
Make a motion to a chairman, sort of...
No, you can't do that until you're done, son.
You're not done, really?
Don't the selectmen have a stamp for all their signatures? Like, on our licenses and everything, it's always the same.
Yeah, yeah, you can do that, as long as you...
Since we've authorized everything.
You know, and I know Liz works at Clark's office, I saw it years ago, when there was something not signed for, for Toll Brothers, when they sold some deal they had, it was signed by the selectmen in ninety-three, but never, uh, notarized from Clark, had the clerk notarized at ninety-eight. Now, how's that work? And the people weren't even there, like Kenny Jones was gone, and I forget who else was on that board. But when you're a clerk, you can do anything.
So, when we sign these, do we have to sign them as unanimous?
No.
No, you only need three.
You only need three.
Three, yeah. So, if someone hated this, you wouldn't sign it.
Correct, you can go, you don't have to stand.
No, I want to sign it.
No, it's, as long as you got three, that's all you need, is the majority.
Special permit, you probably need the four.
I work to my house, I'm all done.
But...
Monday's a holiday.
The other thing is, even if you weren't, you only endorse them, you only, even if you weren't here, right? I can't write my own name.
Do you have a pen?
Yeah, yeah. Capital school, Joe, if they do. Twelve years. I'm looking at your penmanship. You must have got your knuckles whacked a few times. What do you like? Yes, Joe? Sister Mary DePazzi?
Why don't you give them a hold of them?
Yeah, that might be the, like, look up the corner. They're all in the same spot, you know, all right. Thank you.
My Lord. See through them, I don't know which one I'm signing.
I've marked in this one, because this is the bottom, you know, it's the...
They have the worst signature of everybody. You're getting like the doctor's signature.
It's a quick one.
Come on, ask it, it's like...
You should spell something out. So, that's a hundred years from now, someone will pick up the Joe Maraski...
Signs his name like he asks questions of people. Long and drawn out, what are you doing, dude? You had a whole encyclopedia's worth of questions there for those guys.